Okay. So may I spell the order of this Stanton Flashlight?
I didn't listen to you.
And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do a roll call, please?
Absolutely. Commissioner Tomell?
Yep.
Commissioner Layton? Commissioner Tanike?
Yes.
Commissioner Irons?
Here.
Commissioner Bell?
Here.
Commissioner Carberry will be late.
Oh, yeah, I missed it.
Okay.
Uh, your funny.
For the resign due to job changes and so we did do recruitment and David Jones? Applicant and so the appointment by city council this month, so. There's no formal swearing in or anything, we just did trial and fire.
Good enough. Let's do it. Uh, approval of minutes. Everyone get a chance to read the minutes?
Yes.
Right?
Can you hear us now?
Yes.
Awesome.
Perfect. Okay, so to get us back to where we were, we had a motion and a second on the approval of minutes. Everybody in the room voted aye. We could not capture right this vote, so right now, motion on the minutes?
Uh, I'm trying to make it go. Yes, yes, yes.
Okay.
I'm a yes.
Okay.
And then we move on to public hearings now. So we have two. First one will be RVW twenty-four dash zero 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 eight. Once that's completed, we will go to CUP twenty-four dash zero 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 one. The public hearing on the site design review, the first one, RVW two four dash zero 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 eight is called to order. Rosa Cardenas, owner and Alberto Gutierrez, applicants, the subject is property is described as ten slot. Eleven hundred of such map, four hundred and twenty-five base zero nine A D zones light industrial. The request is to approve an auto body shop. Criteria are found in the Department of Development Code, Chapter two point four by industrial, Chapter four point two development review. And site design review section four point two point six hundred, global criteria. And provisions within chapter three, design standards, is being processed as type three decision today. This public hearing will be conducted as follows. We'll begin with the staff report. We'll go to public testimony in the following order. The applicant, any testimony supporting the applicant. And testimony opposing the application, any neutral testimony, and then we'll follow with rebuttal if there is any applicable. Then we will close the public testimony. After recording is closed for testimony, no other testimony will be heard from anyone unless the planning commission has a specific question. Planning commission may ask questions of staff, after which the planning commission will discuss matter, the matter and the decision. Planning commission may make a final decision tonight, or the matter may be continued to a time and date certain future. If the matter is continued, this will be the only notice of that time and date we will receive. For testimony, if you wish to speak, please fill out a testimony form, submit it to the associate planner. I will recognize those people wanting to speak. Any questions should be addressed through me. Excuse me, please state both your name and address for the record when you come to the podium, so we have an online audience for recording. Please keep testimony concise and to the point. Testimony should be on the action under consideration and address the substantial criteria. The criteria that apply to the decision are listed in the staff report. Testimony on other issues will be rejected and not considered by the planning commission. Failure to raise an issue in sufficient detail to allow the planning commission and the parties the liability to, the ability to respond to the issue prohibits an appeal to the land use board of appeals, L U B A, based on that issue. Similarly, failure to raise constitutional or other issues regarding the conditions of approval in sufficient detail to allow the planning commission to respond to the issue prohibits a lawsuit in circuit court on that basis. Now, I ask the members of the planning commission to disclose any ex parte contacts, bias, or conflicts of interest. Please indicate the nature and extent of the ex parte contact, bias, or conflict of interest, and indicate whether you intend to participate in or abstain from the hearing. Hearing none. Does anyone in the audience wish to challenge a planning commissioners impartiality? Hearing none. Associate Planner Nancy Orlana will now present the staff report.
The action I am presenting is a request for a development of an auto body shop in the light industrial zone. An auto body shop in the light industrial zone is an allowable use outright, but because of the size of the shop. You must go through the site design review type three procedure with approval from the planning commission. Thank you. During last week's site team meeting, which is a meeting with utility and service providers. No issues were identified that would preclude the development from moving forward. All criteria have either been met or can easily be met. Water and wastewater are available adjacent to the site. And applicants will be required to install sidewalk in conformance to the city of Portland cyclical standards. A landscaping plan will be required and must be completed before a certificate of occupancy can be obtained. That kind of wrapped up my staff report. Again, the use is an unlawful use outright. But again, because of the size of the shop, has to go through this process and be approved to the planning commission. Are there any questions?
Was there any other correspondence for this?
None.
I do not have any reading questions. Public testimony, do we have the applicant?
Yes, applicant.
Does applicant wish to speak?
Yeah.
Yes.
Could you step up to the podium and give us your name and address?
I can speak loud. Okay. My name is Rosa Cardenas and my husband Alberto Gutierrez. We are planning to build a body shop. We have in the area living here in Portland for the last twenty-six years. We have five kids. Two of them went to the Western University, one is for business administration. The other one is literature. Okay, he wants that. My husband and his three kids, they plan to work on the shop. They are involved on the business for the last, his for the last forty years or more, I guess. We had in Guadalajara, Mexico, a body shop. And well, we decided to come to this country and I'm happy to that we did it, so. Two of his kids are in the same business. He works for hubs at Bari in Hermiston for the last seventeen years. So you know what he's doing and we just need your approval. Yeah, it's a little bit part of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone here that wish to speak in support of the application? Is there anyone that would wish to speak in opposition to the application? Would anyone like to speak to any neutral testimony? Okay, then we can forego a rebuttal. The public testimony portion of this hearing is now closed. No questions raised. Does the planning commission have any questions for staff? My own question was, was there any issues raised with any agencies that look at this at all?
No, no. So site meeting was last Thursday. It wasn't overly well attended, but it is an opportunity for agencies to also connect with us and no.
Nothing was raised.
No utility providers, water and wastewater is there, even to electric. We'll need to connect human to electric with them so they get the power to the lot, but you know, that's just one of the many steps we go through with development, so. The building official, I guess the building official, because it will be an auto body shop, there will be some, some kind of higher level building requirements. Because of the paint, the, the storage of the, the paint and then how the, the room that you built actually do the painting in, how it's ventilated. So there's some additional steps from the whole building, planning, and building process, but nothing that would be. That would trigger a reason to, to not allow it. Yeah.
Any discussion from the planning commission?
I have none. I like the idea.
Right now, if you want to go over. No, I think we need it. It's good.
There it is. No, I'm good.
Okay, everything seems pretty straightforward to me. I'm going to agree with David. So we decide if we want to, someone wants to enter in a motion to approve the site design review as presented, or if they have any. Amendments, so moved. We did move to approve as presented, this is RVW two four dash zero 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 eight. Do we have a second? Yes. We have a second. Motion and second, will we get a roll call?
Commissioner Tomell?
Yes.
Commissioner Tanike? Commissioner Tanike, can you hear us?
You're frozen again.
Yes, I can and yes, yes, yes.
Commissioner Irons?
Yes.
Commissioner Berici?
Yeah, yes.
Thanks, Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
So moved.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to the next public hearing, which will be on judicial use permit, CUP two four dash zero 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 one. With calls and orders. Owner applicants, city of Portland, property is described as portion of the direct way of our new street and Gordon Avenue. Commercial, residential, requests to install a traffic say dome, meaning required warrants improvements to Gordon Avenue between northeast and northwest first streets. Consists of full roof, reconstruction sidewalk, gutter, storm range improvements, and on-street parking. Right here for approval, found the Department of Development Code, Chapter two point two, Chapter four point four, additional use permits. Being processed as a type three decision. Hearing testimony criteria will be the same as listed in the previous public hearing. Any planning commissioner wish to disclose any ex parte contacts or bias or conflict of interest? Does anyone in the audience wish to challenge a planning commissioner? Bias, conflict of interest, or something? Hearing none. Do you have staff for this one?
It'd be me.
Here, please.
Okay, so the request this evening is to approve the installation of a traffic light. With related street improvements at the corner of North Main and Portland Avenue to include the conversion of the North Main Street intersection with the Northeast and Northwest Front Streets. To right in, right out configuration and the record needs to reflect that. Commissioner Carberry has arrived. Thank you so much.
I'm delighted to be here at a tour with the bond people and I will so. Thank you. Okay.
Also, the request continues to determine that the installation is in conformance with the main street interchange area management plan and meets necessary needs. So again, applicant in this situation, in this, for this action, as well as the owner of the infrastructure is the city of Portland. Zonia, the area is commercial, tourist, commercial, and residential. And if anybody's wondering where the residential property is, the school actually sits on property that's owned for residential purposes, so schools will allow it in a residential dome. The subject property is the right of way for both Main Street and Portland Avenue. North of the Main Street interchange, adjacent businesses include the C N D, the Chevron, the Sinclair, the Portland Office Center, and Riverside High School. So a little bit of background, and I think in this instance, the background is really important for this particular action. So a number of years ago, the city of Portland actually experienced a loss of life at this intersection. After which the currently installed rectangular rapid flashing beacon, otherwise known as R R F B, or for me flashy thing, was installed. What we looked at is that during peak pedestrian crossings, predominantly as schools and parks times use of the R R F B. Can create traffic backups along Main Street that can impact queuing on the westbound Interstate eighty-four off ramp. Which can create potential impediments into the westbound travel lane. So what happens is the students start crossing, you know, lunch starts at ten forty-five. The first one pushes it, one or two walks through, it doesn't stop flashing, the next student survives, they push it, it just keeps flashing. And sometimes there's stoppages and, and traffic can flow. But if that, it doesn't happen, if the students just are kind of a one D, two D continuous flow. We have seen traffic backup along Main Street past front and then begin to impede the westbound off ramp. When that happens, it takes one or two trucks and a couple of cars to see that westbound off ramp traffic backup into the travel lane of Interstate eighty-four. Doesn't happen very often, but it's happened enough, it's gotten ODOT's attention. This area is subject to the Portland Main Street Interchange Area Management Plan. It's a document that was adopted in two thousand and nine. And any development or street projects within that management area must conform to the requirements of that interchange area management program. There are street lights envisioned in that I A M E, but those lights weren't envisioned at the off, at the off ramps. The actual intersections with Interstate eighty-four and Main, not in other locations. About two years ago, the city engaged Kittleson and Associates to do an evaluation of the Main Street corridor. And that really was from Columbia to Wilson. To really look at, at the whole Main Street corridor and see what the impacts were. And what the concerns were, kind of what the, the traffic was in that area. We have seen daily traffic counts as high as eight thousand trucks along Main Street. Those are kind of peaks, but we are seeing consistently higher volume numbers along Main Street. And with that has come significantly more near misses and a fair number of accidents as well in the, in the period of time that was evaluated. The purpose of that work by Kittleson was to provide an updated list of improvement projects to support multimodal circulation improvements. Along the corridor as well as at the interchange. There was quite a long and lengthy conversation with the Oregon Department of Transportation, which I'll just refer to as ODOT going forward. About what the necessary planning process would be to authorize the installation of the street light. And we finally decided, thankfully, that it was determined that an amendment to the I A M E would not be necessary. But the signal warrants needed to be identified and no impacts to the interchange itself could occur. Signal warrants were justified and the street light was shown not to impact the interchange in the Kittleson and Associates Main Street corridor assessment. And installation of the center median is also justified to convert northwest and northeast front streets to right in, right out. And for the traffic, for traffic queuing and staging at the signalized intersection. And I'll try to explain that better here in a, in a bit. One thing that's important to note about the I A M P is that it does say the following about access to Main Street in the vicinity of the interchange. It says, "A key element of the I A M P is to the long range, range preservation of operational efficiency and safety of the interchange." And of interchange is the management of access to Main Street. Because access points introduce a number of potential vehicular conflicts on roadway. And are frequently the cause of slowing or stopping vehicles, they can significantly degrade flow of traffic and reduce the efficiency of the transportation system. However, reducing the overall number of access points and providing greater separation between them can minimize the impacts of these conflicts. So I think it's important to note that one of ODOT's objectives, when they work with the community to adopt an interchange area management plan. Is protection of their investment. Their investment is the interchange. Our investment is Main Street. And somewhere in all of this, we find that. Sometimes imperfect balance between the protection of their infrastructure, which again is the interchange itself, the on and off ramps. And then the city's infrastructure, which is Main Street, and then the community's beneficial use of both of those assets. And again, sometimes the outcome is imperfect, but we try to find the balance of how we accomplish all that we need to accomplish in that. So the proposed center median and limiting left-hand turns on Mark Main Street between Press Street, Portland Avenue. Effectively achieves the intent of this statement without closing those accesses. So, so ODOT looks at that and says, we'll close the accesses on, onto Main Street and you limit the conflicts on Main Street. We're trying to figure out how to keep the accesses on Main Street open and limiting left-hand turns. So again, it's that, it's that solution that may not be the perfect solution, but we're trying to achieve a requirement of ODOT while trying to improve safety. So it's, it's, it's balancing all of those, those inputs. In limiting the northeast and northwest front streets to a right in, right out configuration, the Portland Avenue and North Main Street intersection will allow the whole turning movements. For comparison, the same configuration on South Main Street would mean that Oregon Trail Boulevard will also allow full turning movement. And it was a real difference in that because the difference between the interchange, the Oregon Trail is a much further distance than the distance between. Front streets and Portland Avenue on the north side. So there's a big difference in distance there. And trying to manage what, what's happening in that distance is, is, is going to have to be done, is going to be done differently on both sides. The street light installation that will include street sidewalk and parking improvements has, has been designed and it's the first attachment after the staff report sketch or. Sketch, something sketch, sketch, schematic layout is, is one of the traffic, is one of the city engineer called in. It is anticipated that the project will go to bid this year in July of twenty twenty-four, which is constructed starting in March of April, excuse me, of twenty twenty-five. Ending then in July or August of that same year. The duration of time between the construction bidding process and the start of construction is for the procurement of long lead time equipment and materials. This project is identified in the newly adopted capital improvement plan, which the city council adopted on April second of this year. The city manager and planning official have met with several of the immediately impacted land, discussed the project. The safety concerns, it is addressing mitigation of construction impacts and to express our understanding of how this can create negative impacts to business. To business operation. So again, excuse me, the approval criteria is when, and actually in all, all three zones that this touches upon. If you're doing a transportation improvement that is not specifically delineated in the applicable transportation plan, whether in the transportation plan or in this case in the interchange area management plan. Then it does require a public issue of the use permit, judicial use permit are issued by the planning commission through a qualified judicial process, which is complying with. So. There are, I think, five or six standards here specifically that we look at when we go through this process. So city or county facilities improvements, we look at a number of things. Is it consistent with the T S P? And therefore with the state transportation planning rule, is it compatible with the body land uses? Couple others are identified there. The staff response is a proposed street light and related improvements. Um, a couple others are identified there. The staff response is a proposed street light and related improvements on a city facility. It does involve the construction of the area in and around the Main Street and Wardman Avenue intersection. It will involve the installation of a street light. Excuse me, edits components. Um, improve street base, new pavement. Uh, including along Boardman Avenue to both east and west, some new sidewalk and improved access points. A median along North Main, um, from the interchange to the subject intersection and new striping throughout the area. So there are two things that are in here. We've determined that the street is, um, street light is consistent with the IMP. As it does conform to access management plan by continuing to restrict access to the interchange and interchange ramps. And it is in fact working to eliminate impacts to the interchange ramps from traffic that currently backs up with. When continual use of the RRFB causes delays. It is designed to improve safety factors not only within the interchange, but also along Main Street. And at this intersection in particular, mainly Boardman and Main. Uh, eliminates or reduces the turning conflicts along Main Street from just north of the interchange to the Main Street and Wardman Avenue intersection. It's doing that by installing a median that will restrict left-hand turns. It does not restrict right-hand turns in that area. It will assure that all current accesses are maintained. To allow some level of ingress or egress. And it improves several accesses with improvements that also support pedestrian utilization. We've also determined that the street light is warranted based on the following. While not within the standard timeframe for consideration, there has been pedestrian loss of life at this intersection. This intersection is a primary school crossing area for River High Tech Riverside High School during the arrival lunch and parker times. Use of the current RRFB creates backups along Main Street, which can impact the westbound offering queuing queuing. Pedestrian volume outside of school pedestrian usage continues to increase along Main Street. If you've driven. Main Street or walked it lately, you will notice that pedestrian and when when the weather is good, bicycle traffic is also creating. And then crash data from two thousand sixteen to two twenty, two thousand and twenty are identified in the Kittleson and Associates report. And it shows that there are a variety of different types of crashes throughout the central corridor. Abiding land uses are commercial in nature with the exception of the school. Um, the school is located. About a thousand or more feet from the intersection with school green space and recreational space in between. Um, the CND drive-in is probably most affected by the installation of the street light and design of the project took into consideration their setback distance from the road. With a desire to maintain outdoor seating on the west side of their development. Uh, we you'll notice also when you'll just tonight, we've eliminated the parking on the ninth floor side of their building. Uh, but installed additional and significantly more parking on the north. On along northeast, um. Uh, Boardman Avenue. The project is locationally dependent, um, and again, safety is one of the primary reasons for pursuing the street light. But it should be stated that we're also working to become compliant with the interchange area management plan. I think it's really important to note that. The the city of Wardman's council, planning commission and council back in two thousand and seven. And I was not working for the city of Wardman then. I was working in county at the time. I remember the debate. Um, the original IMP actually worked, its intent was to close front streets. And the city said, no, that doesn't work for us. And so. They came back to the table and we worked, they worked through the process to adopt the two thousand and nine IAMP. And it has a requirement that the front streets become right in, right out. Few people at ODOT still remember that they wanted to close those and I just keep hoping enough of them retire or they forget that over time. But we still hear that occasionally from some of the ODOT folks about closing front streets. Um, we're hopeful that we can figure out how to do other improvements along that Main Street corridor. To preserve the right in, right out availability at front streets and and that's all of them on the north side and the south side. So I think it's really important to. Think about how the city is trying to, again, find that sometimes imperfect balance. In achieving what the IMP is seeking to achieve while still trying to figure out how to maintain. All the other things that we need to maintain, including the access to business and circulation. So the intersection of Main Street, I'm moving on through the criteria, the intersection of Main Street and Wardman Avenue is not a state facility. But again, we are trying to preserve. A state facility in doing this and trying to preserve the interchange of the Interstate eighty-four. And again, all of this is happening within the management area of the Main Street IMP. Um, is it consistent with the TTP and PPR? Um, the city has determined that the installation is consistent with the Main Street IMP. We went through those points uh, pages ago and is therefore consistent with the transportation planning rule. Um. And then the the last piece here, so the CUP is good for up to three years. Again, our construction, our bidding and construction schedule will have this completed within the next year and a half. So, um. That's the staff report. What I what I want to draw your attention to in your packet is the schematic layout. And share with you kind of the specifics of what's proposed. So the light is proposed again at Boardman Avenue and Main. Um, because of the built environment, we ended up doing, um. Two poles with four with two arms. So rather than having a pole at each corner with an arm or a light structure, there are two poles. Uh, one has a longer arm, one has a shorter arm to achieve the same configuration of hanging lights. Um, and those poles are proposed to be, um, placed, uh, on school property in easement. Uh, on the northeast corner and then on the southwest corner, uh, in the right of way adjacent to the Sinclair property. The gray that you see on that schematic layout is the new pavement. And so Boardman Avenue, uh, from First Street to First Street, Northwest and Northeast Front, uh, First Streets. It will be, uh, have a have new pavement on it. And in that configuration, you'll notice that we do lose on-street parking in front of the old city hall and Smiley's. And we also lose angle parking, um, at CND, which actually is, um. More in the right of way than on their property. So what you'll notice on the school district property is about eighteen new paved parking spaces. What this doesn't show is that there's been additional conversation. And improvements in Northeast Boardman Avenue will actually continue to the east, to the. The bus loop entrance at the high school. Um, and there will be about that many parking spaces installed again. There will be a bump out there to be across from Northeast First Street. And then there will be additional angled parking, um, from the other side of that bump out to just before you get to the the school districts. Uh, in that last roundabout or term circular drive that they have. And and sidewalk will be installed along there as well. It does show, uh, turn lanes in each of the four, uh, co- uh, areas here, uh, with a, uh, protected turn lane, um, for each leg. Uh, it does show a median barrier at front streets to achieve the front street as being a right in, right out. I don't know exactly how that will be built, um, uh, but it it's. It one of the things we have to, we we can't. We have to be able to preserve right and left hand turns at the interchange on and off ramps. And so the median starts far enough north. To provide that blockage for, to make sure front street becomes right in, right out, but will still allow a truck to make a right hand turn. Coming off the westbound lane and able to go north. Um. So the median is there and then that median does continue as a curved median to the light. So left-hand turns along that section of Main Street will be restricted by the design and build of this. New pedestrian facilities will be installed along Boardman Avenue. And the accesses along that Boardman Avenue are going to be limited. Um, the access into CND along Boardman Avenue is about a twenty foot access, if I recall. The access into the Sinclair is about a fifty wide, fifty foot wide access point. And again, there will be pedestrian improvements in there. You'll also notice that there's, um, the parking in front of the current. Uh, the county's, uh, public health building is has been modified a little bit as well, um, to angle parking. That's the schematic layout. The other piece that you have in your packet is the Kittleson and Associates technical memorandum. Um, in your packet, we did not provide you the entire document. We provided you, um, the text of the document, the balance of the document. Is incredibly fascinating. You like to read. Tables and park and turning schematics, um, and all of the data that supports that. And I know Matt is with us tonight, Matt Hugart, the principal author of that document. And he can take you through all of those those exciting specifics. Uh, the last component in your packet, uh, is a letter in opposition from Alex Patton Howard, uh, of Patton Howard Striping. They are the owner and operator of the Sinclair, um. Service station there along, uh, along Main Street. Um, I'm happy to answer any questions you have and I have no doubt that you have many, um. And I'll do my best to answer them. And Matt is here, he is also helping, um. As staff support for this discussion tonight, so, um. If if you're okay, uh, with it, I would go ahead and ask if he has anything to add at this time or if he just wants to be available to answer questions.
No, uh, thanks, everybody. Uh, yeah, this is Matt Hugart with Kittleson. Um. Carla did a great job summarizing it. I'll just make myself available for questions when they arise.
Thank you, Matt.
So, eh, one question I have, there's a portion of this packet with some roundabout options. You might need to grant a word about.
So so let me, let me talk to that just a little bit. Um, when we started the process with Kittleson. And then it's ODOT and incredibly long conversation about. About the Main Street Interchange Area Management Plan, about the evaluation of the, um. Of the Main Street corridor. And again, we asked Kittleson to look at the whole corridor. We, there are some, there are some significant limitations with. How to improve traffic flow along Main Street. Given that. The O- ODOT's ability to replace the overpass is significantly limited. And it's, it's not a couple million dollars to replace that infrastructure. It's probably twenty-five million dollars to replace that infrastructure. And it does, it's not very good for pedestrians. It doesn't, it's not why they have to afford a turn lane. So there's a lot of limitations. And so. The the roundabouts that you're seeing in this document is really. Was our attempt and Kittleson's attempt to address some issues that ODOT raised. And and we went through a number of configurations and alternatives. That looked at roundabouts in a couple of different ways, you know, from. From an oval to being a four lane, to to four legs. Could we actually put the front streets in the roundabout? Would that reserve them? Um, and in the end, there was just, even internally, there was so much opposition to to the roundabouts. And even though the roundabouts are significantly. Less expensive than widening the bridge. We kind of came to the conclusion that at this point, we probably don't need to go to that. To that step. Um, our focus in a lot of this was figuring out what the impediments were along the Main Street corridor. But there was a real city focus on addressing the safety issues at Boardman and Main. And so we came to the conclusion that we invested in this document. We probably need to keep this document. We need to, um, do an update to the Main Street Interchange Area Management Plan at some point in time. It is almost fifteen years old. Um, but that for now, we worked with ODOT to say, let's just, let's just use the technical memorandum as background. And support, background for the corridor and support for the Main Street Boardman Avenue light. So are we going to build roundabouts in the next year and a half? No. No, I don't know that in the next five years, we would even have consideration about roundabouts. But we do have a document now that validates them and says, well, you can probably put them in. But does it really address the issue? And you had to balance the roundabouts against figuring out how to fund just widening the darn overpass. What makes more sense? And I think most people in Boardman would say, well, if we have the money, it would make more sense to widen the overpass. Because pedestrians are. Not enhanced in a roundabout environment either. So, so there's a little.
And they would only take a couple of trucks to screw up the roundabout traffic flow.
Right.
They would have to be limited in their ability to go up and down Main and then go around back to the Port of Morro exit, whatever.
Right.
But it would be terrible.
And we also know that the Port of Morro is, um, both an on and off ramp, um. For what's called the high wa- high, high wide and heavy. I'm not gonna give that anyway, high loads, wide loads and heavy loads. Um, they come off barges and have to get out of the port. Onto the interstate system or they're on the interstate system and they need to get to the port, get on a bar or on a rail. And that's the other thing we're, we're trying to figure out how to balance is how do we maintain. That ability for those types of loads to move through here as well. And roundabouts are not friendly to that unless they're built in a way that you can literally drive over. So, eh, again, yes, they're in here. We, we included them for for reasons that we're, we're trying to make a case. Um, but again, I think the focus, the immediate focus is on the Boardman and Main and the light and the safety issues. Roundabouts are a. They're an argument for another day.
No, I think I appreciate alternative. Very John Klein for roundabouts personally. Um, another question, so with the proposed plan. I don't know if I missed it or not. Um, is, was there, uh, was there anything in the. Study or packet for what the traffic estimate would be post this plan on the front street? Um, Northeast and North both front streets, like what? What are, what are we saying is gonna happen to that traffic will lead to where it is currently?
So I don't think it's, I don't think the numbers are gonna drop. What's gonna happen is traffic's gonna. Local traffic's gonna learn how to maneuver and be able to get from where they, where they are and where they need to be by utilizing the loops. Um. We've been working closely and some of you will recall the public hearing that we had for the safe center expansion. A year ago, maybe? Yeah, maybe. Um, and about how we would manage the traffic leaving an event at the. Um, at the convention center and how we would manage that. And even at that point in time, we had some sense of of, okay, we know, we know the IMP says eventually we have to figure out how to make fronts right in, right out. How does that work when you're having an event at the safe center, traffic comes west on front? Their only alternative at that point then is to make a right hand. That's not getting them where they need to go. So we're gonna have to figure out, we're, we're gonna end up having to figure out how to do that. That signage that says to get to eighty-four, you actually need to turn right here, to turn right here, you know. How many lefts make a right and how many rights make a left, that kind of thing. So, um. You know, for people that don't know Boardman, they're gonna come off and they're gonna go, oh, I can't get to where I wanna go. Uh, oh wait, I can go around and come in the backside or oh, I can go here. Um, and oh, and then how do I get out? Because I still can't make a left. So, um, you know, we figured it out when we went to Woodburn. Uh, we'll figure it out when we go to Boardman. Um, it is gonna be a learning process and I think that's just part of what we do. And the city's gonna have to be good at signage. So I don't know if I'm really getting to your, to your question, but.
Mostly, yeah.
Yeah, I I I don't think that the amount of traffic changes, I think how we move that traffic is going to change.
Uh, next question then. Just while it has advancement, taking all of my time for you guys. Uh, there was a portion of this about, um, the improvements of First Street. In the plan, it only showed the picture was just southeast and southwest of the street. For, I don't know, First Street, I think it is, um, going north, south down off of Front Street, parallel to the Main Street. Is the same improvements being thought for the north, east and northwest First Streets? This is improvement?
So, yes, so.
If we're on track to.
Right, when you, when you look at the current Main Street Interchange Area Management Plan, when you look at what it requires relative to closer of the front streets, again, all four of them. On the north side, on the north side, the loops are First and Boardman Avenue. You know, however you would, I can't walk, there's two guns. You know, however you would, I can't walk, there's two guns. So the same thing happens on the south side, the loops are bigger, but it is First Streets that currently don't exist. And Oregon Trail that only exists on the east side. So we know we have a development proposal that's been approved for a hotel development. Um, in the southwest quadrant, that's gonna trigger the city to work with the developer to conclude that loop. Down to Oregon Trail over to Main. And then Oregon Trail's already on the east side. And this summer, we're actually gonna be rebuilding Front and Southeast. Uh, First. So Southeast Front and Southeast Front.
Southeast Front.
And First, which doesn't currently exist.
Right.
Front, First, yeah, it's tongue twisting.
Why don't we create Southeast Front in that whole process? It's really bad.
It, it's happening, yes, yes. And so eventually Southwest. Eventually, they all get done. All of the front streets.
Part of this plan, though, we're not, for northeast, specifically northeast, northwest First Street. No planned improvements as part of this plan.
Not as part of this, but I will tell you, we have another development proposal that will be in front of you next month. That will probably drive improvements on Northwest First and Northwest Front. So the balance of this block where the Sunrise Cafe is, there's a development proposal that on this direction. So, yes, I think we will see improvements in that quadrant fairly soon. Now, the other quadrant, Front's in really bad shape, but that northeast First Street is not in horrible shape. And northeast Front, the entire spans is in the CIP for improvement sometime in the next two to five years. As is, as is South Main.
So all, all freeway traffic coming off the freeway regardless of direction, westbound, east or east or westbound. Will all come down into Main and have to turn right, obviously. To, so let's say they wanna go to Sinclair.
They will.
They're gonna have to go all the way around to northeast First?
They'll have to go, they'll have to go to the light. At the light, turn left.
Yep.
And then they can turn in left right there.
Over a double yellow or solid yellow line?
So they can't turn left right at? Well, First, I'm not sure the names, but.
What?
They can't turn left right here?
No, because there's no turn lane here anymore. It's all right. When you come down here, you gotta go right. It's all right in and right out. There's no left turns on Main down.
So how does Sunrise Cafe feel about that?
So we talked to them too. Um, and so access to Sunrise, you would go north of the light.
Yeah.
So you'd go north of the light, you'd take a left on Boardman Avenue. You would take a left onto First, you'd take a left on Front. And enter into their business. And then when you leave, you simply would go to, unless you wanted to go north.
Yeah.
You were, if you're, if you were turning to the freeway, then you would. Again, you would take, you would come out and go.
So we're gonna, we're gonna have, we're gonna, we're gonna ask this, this new four-way to handle. Control all traffic directions, basically. You're gonna come to the light in any direction and decide where you wanna go from there.
Yeah, yeah, the light, the light is the control.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that's the reason for the median barrier? You want that light?
Right, so, so here's, here's, again, here's that imperfect solution, right? ODOT wants to close front streets. We don't want to close front streets. We want to preserve the front streets. The, the, the agreement with ODOT is we're not gonna close them, but we'll meet you halfway and we'll make them right in, right out. So front streets become right in, right out. ODOT also wants us to limit, to eliminate accesses on Main Street. That would eliminate the Main Street entrance into Chevron and CND and Sinclair. And we said, no, here's the imperfect answer. We will meet you halfway. We will limit left-hand turns along that portion of Main Street. But we won't, we won't eliminate those access points into those businesses. So if you're going north on Main Street, you can make a right into the current accesses that you turn into to go to Chevron or CND. If you're coming south on Main Street, you can still make that same right-hand turn into Sinclair from Main Street. So these, these are the, these are the balances and the counterbalances when you're having this conversation with ODOT. We don't wanna close the front streets. We don't wanna close those Main Street accesses. But to get to where we're, we're meeting what they want us to meet. Relative to how we protect their infrastructure, they're asking us to make fronts right in, right out. And to limit left-hand turns on that section of Main Street.
Is there, is there a? A minimum distance from the intersection? That they're saying to go back to disallow left-hand turns prior to that interception?
Actually, the, the access management standard is thirteen hundred and twenty feet, and Boardman Avenue does not meet that. But because we have a built environment, they're willing to allow that first full intersection at Boardman Avenue.
That's better than quarter mile.
It is a quarter.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, and on the south side, Oregon Trail is pretty darn close to that quarter mile. So, so as we apply the same standards on the south side. The same thing's going to happen. There will be no left-hand turns. Along Main from the interchange to Oregon Trail. There will be right hands. And again, we're trying to preserve our ability to keep those Main Street accesses open. And maintain front streets as right in, right out. The alternative being closing them.
Is there any thought into that? In just closing the front streets?
We can't do that with, with, with the.
With the safety center. I remember that's a good idea, which one, the idea has been entertained.
ODOT really likes that idea.
There's the question, and this is just playing devil's advocate, but what are the consequences if we don't?
Um, at some point in time.
Does ODOT really gonna come in and say, no, we're gonna just. We're gonna gray out Front Street because you're not doing what we want, want you to do?
Well, you know, it, it is, it is a relationship. And it's, there's benefits to both sides. And again, it's that imperfect solution. So will, will ODOT come in and shut us down tomorrow? No. Um, but look at how ODOT eventually um, had to manage Woodburn. I mean, I, I'm sorry, Woodburn is for me the foster child of ODOT and interchanges. So it's an interchange south of Portland.
It's, it's, it's ridiculous, it's huge.
It is now. It's a, yeah, I mean, there's a huge outlet um, facility there, Columbia Outlet Mall, or what, I don't know what it's called, but. Um, the traffic at that interchange is. I, I don't know how, I don't know what they trigger every day, but it's probably in the tens of thousands of cars. It might be a hundred thousand cars every day at that change.
Yeah.
And it used to be very small until they started building that environment up, and now it's this huge interchange. There used to be a Chevron station that you could drive, you know, pull off and pull in and pull back out and get on. And in today, with the amount of traffic at that interchange, you're doing, you're, you're doing this at that interchange. To, to get in and get out to that service station and about four others that are in that interchange area. Um, I'd like to say it's worse, but I have to say that it's. It takes longer, but it's probably easy. In, in some respects, it's easier to get around, because you know where you're going. It's clearly marked. It's, it's managed with lights, it's, yeah. It's not as easy to get off, hop into that gas station and get right back on the freeway. But it's probably safer today to get off and go to, to go to a gas station and get back on. It's gonna take you longer.
My concern is just that, I mean, to not be able to make those left-hand turns into Sinclair. And into Sunrise Cafe are significantly limiting the access that they have for the. For the people that don't know Boardman.
Absolutely. No, I, I don't disagree. It's, it is, it is the imperfect solution. But do remember that part of the reason that we're doing this, in fact, a big part of the reason that we're doing this. Is for safety of the kids who are using that intersection to cross when they're accessing school in the morning. When they're lunchtime traffic, and when they're going home at the end of the, of the school day.
And, and for those, for the stops, like, I, I, I'm fine with the stoplight. But it's the, it's that part of, of right along Main Street where we can make a left-hand turn. That's the only thing that I think to myself.
Right, but if you don't, if you don't, if you don't, if you don't limit the turns. The stoplight becomes inconsequential because, because people are gonna wanna turn left. Into Sinclair if, if it's, if that option is there.
Right.
With the traffic light right in front of them.
Yep.
And so now their stops thirty feet before the traffic light wanna turn, waiting for traffic. And other people that are, that are wanting to go down Boardman, just like it is now, have to scoop around them. And get in that turn lane to turn left.
Right.
Where, which is where this will make them turn left, or this is, this required.
Or if they don't understand, if the next person in line doesn't understand they're trying to make that left-hand turn, the queuing now is pushed back that much further. And you are gonna start impeding not only the front street, but the on-ramp or the freeway. And, and it's the freeway on-ramp that, that we are most concerned about. Because of the queuing that happens back down the on-ramp that can impede traffic into the traveling. Or people are traveling suddenly passing out.
So along with that imperfect solution.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and I'm sure Kittleson has some very smart people that work for him, smarter than I. But we all know that between three P M and six P M. North Main specifically is a nightmare. Um. With this light coming into effect, thirty thousand foot V bright. So, is ODOT doing anything to sequester the traffic coming onto Main? Or are they going to continue to pour onto Main and back up across the bridge? And impact that so that all these businesses in the area aren't accessed anyways?
So, take me through those steps again.
Yeah. So, is ODOT doing anything to control the traffic coming off of those streets?
Oh, okay, so. We had a very pointed conversation with ODOT. And said, look, there are other things that are in the IMP that are not our responsibility and they're your responsibility. One of those is taking that westbound off-ramp and separating it in so that there is a um. A protected left. So as you come up and you're, you're heading west, you're gonna come off the off-ramp, make a left or go straight. Or make the, the right. And so we've had a very pointed conversation with ODOT that, yes. We're, if we're doing our part, if we're working to do what, what we want us to do around front streets. And then, again, we don't wanna close the accesses on Main. We wanna retain those. Um, but to do that, we're, we're gonna eliminate left turns. Then, ODOT, we need you to step up and make improvements to the off-ramp. And so there, there was significant um, agreement on the ODOT side that, yes, they needed to do that. Now, timing for ODOT is questionable, um, but we really, we really pushed two things. One, the, the off, off and on ramps, particularly the off ramps, and getting so that we have those, that two lanes as opposed to one. Um, that helps with the stacking, the queuing on the off ramps. The other piece is, is that when you, when you do take the westbound off-ramp and you're trying to make that left-hand turn. Which is my route to work every morning, that fence.
Yeah.
Is a problem.
Same thing on the eastbound off-ramp.
Absolutely.
Looking in the north.
Yeah, it's the same thing. You can't see, you can't see what that on traffic, what that oncoming across the bridge traffic is. And so we made it really clear that we need ODOT, we need ODOT now to meet us halfway and work on those improvements. So there, there was agreement that they needed to do that. Again, timing will be, will be the question, but I think. I think um, i- in your decision tonight, you could certainly um. Uh, encourage ODOT to move forward with their improvements that would continue to, to help the overall situation of the interchange.
Any other lingering questions for staff? And there was only the one correspondence for this.
Yeah.
And there's no, there's no uh, set uh, design yet in regards to signage. If, let's say people have the Sinclair uh, bonus program, they need to know how to get around to get in there.
Right, so.
The off, I mean, the three-way traffic. Do we know how we're gonna sign all of that? Because you said we gotta get creative with it.
So, yeah, we know that we're gonna, we're gonna mimic any other interchange, you know, with the westbound Interstate eighty-four. Turn here, you know, that kind of stuff, or to access Interstate eighty-four. And there will be the, 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 the freeway signs with the arrows saying, make this turn, make that turn, yeah. So, I know we haven't, we haven't designed all that. That'll be part of the construction project.
Okay.
Yeah. It's, it's one of the requirements of the construction project to, to have signage. Yeah.
Uh, was there anything else you wanted to present, you should put as the city?
The last thing I would share is that we also had this at site team last week um, with our utility providers. Um, and service providers, um, lots of support for the project. Um, you know, part of the issue with utility providers is we want them to know we're ripping the street up. And if they have anything they wanna put in the street, now would be the time to coordinate with the city. So we don't put new pavement down and six months later have to rip it up to put, you know, whatever it may be in. Um, and then with the um, the fire, uh, fire marshal always attends those site team meetings and, and uh. Of course, the light will have to be programmed so that when they come. You know, once Sam shows up with, with his truck or his ambulance and electric black, and maybe to give like, give a green to go through. So, um, yeah, that's just part of the light maintenance process.
Yeah. Uh, thank you. Everyone, I appreciate it. Uh, does anyone wish to speak in favor of the application? Does anyone wish to speak against the application? Please find your way to the microphone and station name and address for our online audience, please.
Alec Tattenhauer, one-two-two. West Seventeenth Street in Dallas, Oregon. Uh, thanks for having us. Appreciate your service, folks. Good questions. I'm glad you got the map in front of you. Um, so I'm here today to oppose primarily the median, which. In my opinion, is gonna uh, greatly impact our gas station convenience store. We've been there since about the mid-eighties, early eighties, uh, family. Um, haven't owned it that long. Babel Allen, probably a little over in the grave, but she knew this was going on, but. Uh, I've been owning it for, for quite a few years now, but um. I do have a couple of comments and some questions for Carla and Mike. I think the question you asked, I appreciate it. Uh, I believe the lights can be queued. So the, the one lane could flush out before oncoming traffic. So I think that could be remedied with the, the light sequence.
Yeah.
Um, but yeah, that's, that's a. I, I mean, and, and you've seen the map. I'm trying to, yeah, explain, hey, you gotta cross the W L and two. Two other lanes to turn into my place of business. And I just, I can't fathom somebody want me to, to do that. We're under construction. I'm spending almost a million dollars here currently. Uh, we rebuilt our whole underground storage infrastructure, uh, new electrical service, uh, you know, a hundred and forty, a thousand dollars of asphalt coming. Next week, hopefully, um, it's expensive or ruined in this community. Um. I've got some employees here, we staff about twenty-three people. Um, and we, you know, I appreciate all you guys, gals, most of you proud of your customers. Um, I do have a question for Carla. Uh, I don't wanna put you on the spot, but I'm gonna take a caption out of the uh, the report here, so. And I'm all about being safe. We, we run fuel transports over down the freeway. Believe me, safety is top priority. Um, so here's, I'm gonna read it word for word. So it says, "Safety is one of the primary reasons. For pursuing the street light project based on the loss of life from some years ago. Along with the recording of a significant number of near misses with both cars and pedestrians." So I'm sorry to hear about that loss. I think it's been a few years ago, and from what I understand, it was night, and there was a, a high speed vehicle. It's still unfortunate. Um, my question to Carla is what this part about. Recording of a significant number of near misses with both cars and pedestrians. I mean, I don't. I think I tried to college a few essays and I think I've got it now. Did, I, I looked up on ODOT, they've got, you know, reports for bicycle fatalities, car fatalities. So I mean, is that something that's in print? Kittleson do a survey? Just a couple, you know, conversations in the hallway, hey, some bicycle almost got hit. So I'm not, you don't have any? So I'm not, you don't have the answer, I think I. Trying to present that to traffic light, I can, I think it's a work, we've got kids, we've got school, people moving. Uh, my biggest, my argument is the median, I think you you guys, gals, get all the sense of that. But just, you know, local traffic will find us, it might be inconvenient, but we we do uh rely on Interstate eighty four. Uh, and you ask any, any. Um, businesses along eighty four that, yeah, we appreciate travelers and that's it, we we need those people. Uh, on my way here, I went by the site, Chevron was plugged up, I don't know, we drove by Chevron about five thirty or two to six thirty. Cars were, they're on the roadway, they had about fifteen cars in there, obviously, we're closed. But I can just visualize this in the middle of July, you got campers, R Vs coming off. There's no gas station on the other side of town anymore, you got two of us. You you come up to a median and. I mean, the right turn is always predominant, people like to turn right. We burn the Chevron's on the right, people can get it, it might be a pain in the ass to get out, they're gonna get in there. Uh, Rich Evans not here, but he's got an issue with people coming off the port, won't be able to get to his site. But my point is, if people come up and see a median, they don't know where they're going, they're gonna turn right. And if you got cattle trailers and R Vs and motorhomes stacked up, that's gonna be a bigger problem than probably what's going on now, so. Observe that, maybe it's too late tonight to go and filter, but I observed it, I'm not trying to pour your leg or anything, but. They were plugged up, just that.
Yeah, everybody, everybody sees it, everybody sees it, especially when now that you're closed for for fuel, I mean, it's it's insane.
I went to her, Mr. For a reason today. Thank you, F T, you're welcome. So a couple of other points, and I don't, there's a three minute rule, I don't remember, rooms not full, so I'll just carry on here a little bit, but um. Uh, there was another um excerpt from. Oh, it's in the book page thirty-eight, here, I'm gonna read it, it's a small thing. Let's see, I guess, I can't see that, but the point was they identified that there were the impacts to retail businesses, but. Which is great, thank you, but. I used to call me and say, hey, how much more financial data are you gonna take? Once the median's in and people can't get to your station, so I can. Come up with a figure now, or I can tell you two years from now, or. I've got employees here, we might have to drop the count, we can't support payroll and do business, you know, the way we. Think we we should do business, so I just, I think you you guys get a sense for the for the barrier. And I don't know your best backgrounds, gals, if you're business owners, um. What you drive, where your comfort level is when you're in a foreign place. Big city, little city, uh, if you're in a hurry, you wanna get somewhere and and get back, so. Um, big junction, we've all been to big junction, you talk about Mass, uh, they got another gas station being built there, they don't got convenience. They got left turns all day long across, I mean, I don't, I, ODOT proved that, there's no quarter mile from them. I mean, in a perfect world, you build a new intersection, you're gonna have everything to be quarter mile away. Great, well, this, these are, you know, this interstate chain was probably built in the seventies or eighties, or modified, maybe since, but. Is what it is, and most of these towns along eighty-four that way, so. I don't, I just don't know what what's gonna change, but um, I'm just here to advocate for myself as a business owner, been doing this almost thirty years. Um, and we've been good stewards of Borden and and, you know, provided vital service, so. I just, it's gonna be hugely impactful to our business, um, if people can't get to us. And I I don't, I think it's too much to ask for them to go to light. And turn and then try to cross the double line with two lanes of traffic, every variable will be traffic queued up. At the other section, at that moment, and then then what? You're stuck in the middle of the road, so. Uh, we have that scenario too, so anyway, I. You guys got any questions for me? It does, sorry, so. They have a truck route, so was there a conversation with ODOT to say, hey, truckers, use the other exit? Cause I don't think you're allowed to cross the bridge anyways, the overweight, over wide, so I mean, that would. Be a point to make with ODOT, say, if you're going to the Port Memorial, use the other exit. And that's not too uncommon for other industrial parks. Uh, that would take quite a load off. Your off off ramp here, both directions. And I get that, that's, yeah, it's not. Come up on brake lights, uh. There's just lots of people traveling and it's gonna be, so anyway, I would encourage you to do that, to approach ODOT with. With that approach to, you know, some of the local truckers may have to run that order, but if it's the destination is. Part more going back to the freeway, I don't know why they really don't know that route uh through the Marshall Street, so. I thought, sorry. Okay, any questions for me?
Just one, one question for you, um, so do you think that this will be beneficiary beneficial? Will be beneficial to to the other gas station more than yours or vice versa?
I I think in a way it'll benefit the Chevron, uh primarily from freeway traffic that's. Uh, new to, that doesn't award them that well, or, you know, they've been here a few times, they'll figure it out, but. We get a lot of first timers, I don't know where all these people come from, you know, they're traveling, they've been in Portland, they've been falling, get fuel. Uh, so Chevron's gonna pick all those off, ninety percent. They're gonna lose out on people coming back from the port area, Arby Park Hotel. Okay, so, can't can't turn left, well, they might not wanna turn left anyways, but. They're gonna have so many back, but I think their their uptick will be greater than. Than any loss, I mean, my, I think my loss would be significant, we we've got a site in the Dallas, we lost our our. Ingress and egress, and our our business went to half, just overnight. And it's down a block, turn left, go a block, turn left, come back a block, um, and just people, well.
That's the, that's like the third exit?
Uh, eighty seven, yeah, but yeah, Chevron's across the street, they've got a radio. Uh, ODOT threatened to make them ride out, well, they never did, so. You got a huge cluster there, people trying to turn left, cross traffic, but uh they didn't listen to us when we made the argument, so. Thank you.
Uh, any other testimony opposing the application?
My name is Greg Miller, and I am, uh, I'll give you the work address, it's two oh one West First in the Dells. And I am the operations manager for Hat and Hour Distributing, and I'm newer to the company. Uh, Dora, who is in this even moment, has been working for twenty-four years here in Borden with the company. Alex is their generation family of business, I I'm newer, but I have been very impressed. With the company and their community involvement, uh how they treat their employees. I've been in the business since nineteen ninety-seven and. Have seen these type of things happen to stores before, uh where the. Entrance to the store is limited or changed, uh this one's pretty severe. Um, and I have a hard time imagining our customers or new customers. Uh, coming, knowing where to go into the station, needing to get to a traffic light. Need to make a left turn, and then another left turn, where we might even have cars stacked up waiting for the light. Going going that way, uh, and that will, it will affect the business. Uh, over the years, I've seen, Alex mentioned, sales cut in half in a a store. Uh, that that we own, I've seen sales cut in half or even down to like thirty-three percent. And that does affect, this is affects how many people we can employ, currently, we have between twenty-three to twenty-five people. That we do employ in the store, and these are folks that live in the community, uh they're high schoolers with their first job. Working for us, learning the business, their grandparents are supporting their family, they're they're good people working there, and it could affect. Up to half of our workforce, from what I've seen in the past, or more, um, there's a. Uh, Sinclair, Hat and Hour's been involved in the community, uh it would, you know, loss of sales, loss of revenues. Loss of employees would affect comedian involvement in in many ways. Um, they support schools, we, you know, have signs on the rear doors and different things like that. Do different charitable things within the community, and that's important uh to us, but that it would be, it would affect those type of things. And there'd be ripple effects too, which would include things like uh vendors who bring product to us, some are local, some are. You know, have coming across the state, but we are local, our contractors are all local. It would affect them, so we won't be able to do projects here. Uh, so I I guess my my opposition is just not to safety, it's not to a traffic light, uh we're all for that. Um, my opposition would be to the not having a way for uh people to turn left. Into our our station, cause it it will affect things pretty greatly, that median barricade. Will will probably kind of kill the business here for us.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, any other testimony opposing?
Karen Perso, uh two twenty-nine South Plus Locust Street, Borden, I have the Sunrise Cafe. Um, again, I'm the. College, but the light is okay, but again, cutting off front street, you're cutting a lot. Um, I get a lot of freeway traffic besides Sinclair, and we might get one time, but they won't be back. It's not them, you the friendly stop and go, and for travelers, that means a lot, because. I don't like going around the pool block myself when I have to go somewhere, but usually you're right there, and so. Yeah, safety. I don't know, I just, I don't wanna see it change, signage is too important. Not just because of the sage, and that'll be another topic when you try and figure out what to do with them, and. But I have to say, I disagree with how it's getting. Ramoted through, and ODOT talks and threatens, and how many years are we gonna be talking, you know? I don't know. I'm just a small, little company, and I don't wanna lose it, but vice and quitters, it will affect.
Let me ask you a question. Uh, no, okay, do you, do you wanna do it on the record, or?
Well, I I just, yeah, I'd like to make it on a comment or or however, make it come out and happen.
Can I, yeah, go back to the board? Sure, okay, let's do it real quick.
Okay, okay, thank you. Alitac, number one two two, what, Seventeenth Street, Dallas, Oregon, so one thing I forgot to mention, and since this nicely was up here, and I don't know my financial position, but. Uh, we are contracted with Sinclair Open Corporation, uh and there could be financial consequences too if we can't perform. Reason I brought that up, I don't know if she owns or leases or rents or owns, or, you know, we all pay taxes and. Have payments to make, so uh impacts some of the business, can affect their lifestyle, their livelihood, their family. So I think y'all, I know y'all know that's important, I just wanted to remind you, thank you.
Appreciate that.
Dora Reina, one of Fourteenth Street. Um, I've been working for Hat and Howard Distributing for twenty-four years. Um, we like to help a lot of families here, with especially with the high school kids, we hire a lot of kids and. If we get impacted like that, we're not going to be able to hire nobody. We have um people that goes to college and they said, oh, you've been hiring Hat Howard? We're going to hire you because you have a really base. Work performance, because we teach them how to be responsible, we work with them and we give them the. Training for everybody, and we like to help everybody, but at the same time, if we are going to be closed like that. We're not going to be able to afford to have employees, and. It's going to affect us a lot, so, especially the, not the locals, but I know the people, if you're driving in a new. Town that you don't know, and I know that because I drive all the time and. Um, I get scared and I'm like, where should I go? So I know that they they're not going to go around. To go to Sunrise or to go to Sinclair. Yeah, any questions for me?
Thank you. Excuse me. Uh, any other testimony opposing the application? Is there any neutral testimony? Rebuttal?
Would be the city's, city's, yeah, I think, yeah. Um, so I'll respond to some of the questions that were posed tonight, um and maybe that can fill in where I. Where I missed a couple, so, uh near misses, um lots of conversation around this project over the past two years. Chief Togo was at all of those discussions. How many of those near misses are documented, I couldn't tell you. Uh, what I can tell you is that he's certainly well aware of them. Um, he's well known in the community, uh between him and his officers, they witnessed a lot of the near misses. And again, some of those are pedestrians, um more of those are cars. Um, but near misses and near miss, whatever it may be, it's an accident that that didn't happen, somebody hit the brakes soon enough. Or realized what was happening and and didn't pursue pursue the action, so. Yeah, uh, I I think there's a a pretty good accounting of that, you know, who wants to sit down and talk with with chief or. Or even with current, you know, chief's currently not uh he's out for a while on medical leave, but. You know, acting chief either could probably provide you the same kind of. Um, background information around what they witnessed there at that, at that intersection on a pretty regular basis. Um, truck traffic, um, we really don't see a lot of truck traffic at this interchange, uh highway and heavy, uh they can't go up in this bridge. So they do go around, I mean, they take the off ramp and then get back on the on ramp. Um, so high, high loads can't go into the bridge, uh some of you may remember when the bridge was closed a few years back, cause it got hit by a truck. So most port traffic, it's on the port, it goes through the port interchange now anywhere, comes into the port through some other mechanism. We are seeing more truck traffic at this interchange, but that truck traffic is associated with the initial retail. Um, establishments that we've seen, so Dollar General and Family Dollar have trucks that deliver to them a couple times a week. Um, the grocery store has trucks that deliver to it regularly, not all of those are large trucks, but some are. Um, obviously, the gas stations all have trucks that deliver the fuel, um. Hat Howard actually has the uh Civic Pride uh fuel in there, no, you did.
That's Chevron.
Chevron?
Yeah, on the backside, they have the, they have the key card off, wherever it is.
So, but we do see, we do see a lot of, you know, um, but. I think a lot of truck traffic does fuel, if they stop in Borden, they're either stopping at Love's or they're stopping at. The car lock at the Port Memorial Interchange, um. I guess, uh. You know, the business impacts are the business impacts, uh the city recognizes that those are, those are gonna happen, whether it be to. Chevron is gonna miss out, um and C and D is gonna miss out on port traffic coming from the north. Um, and Sinclair is gonna, yes, absolutely, people are gonna come off the freeway and they're gonna make the easy choice. And it's gonna be, stay, we're here the same concern when we, when we implement similar mechanisms on the south side. That people aren't gonna see that easy off, it's gonna be more difficult. Concern when we when we implement similar mechanisms on the south side, that people aren't gonna see that easy off, it's gonna be more difficult to get there. We see that, we understand that, um again, it's that imperfect, it's that imperfect solution of how we balance. What we need to do to preserve front streets, um. Implement the interchange area management plan. Um I will say that the interchange area management plan was adopted by the city in two thousand and nine. Um we've known that we need to work for this for fifteen years. Um why now? Because we're seeing traffic jams along Main Street, it's five eight thousand vehicles a day, we are seeing the impacts, we are seeing the safety risks. Um yes, it's outside of the timeframe, but we have had pedestrian fatality, however it happened, it happened. Um and we're seeing near misses at at an increasing rate. Um the 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 flashy light, the RRFE serves its purpose, it also creates another problem. So how how do you how do you mitigate that? And I think the important thing to recognize about why is there a median and why are we restricting left-hand turns? Because if there was a way to engineer it and allow left-hand turns, we would. But when you allow the left-hand turns in the middle of Main Street, of that section of the Main Street, you are creating additional backups. Along Main to the south. Would create potential additional negative impacts to the queuing on the westbound offer. So it's about managing the whole, it's how you get there and manage that.
And even even if we allowed the one left turn on your front street. To access VP from that south side of their business or Sunrise. That would, again, I'm assuming you've looked into that, I mean, everything else could be no left turn into into between, you know, between the front and Boardman. If we made if we made that front street left turn, that that would back up right to the freeway fast, right?
The potential is there, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, and again, we're trying to figure out how we achieve the requirements of the IMP and the IMP envisions that the front streets become right in and out.
I have a question, kind of to. Tie it on to what I was saying. They in part of this plan has. Part of it has lights proposed at both.
Right, the lights that were proposed were at the onramps, the the on and off ramps, yes.
Was was the right in, right out, looked at it through the lens of would those in place and what it would affect? Traffic for Front Street, both north and south?
Yeah, I I think if you light the intersection, the freeway intersections, I think you end up. Really because of the distance between the light. And that front street on on the don't dance out, I think you end up, you still have, you you still at a minimum have to make the right in and out. It doesn't matter where you light it, you end up forcing fronts to be right in, right out.
And to be clear, that those lights are not part of this proposal, not the single light.
Just a single light, or not happening in Maine.
Hey Carla, this is Matt, if I could add one thing.
Yeah.
Um so I appreciate all the testimony here tonight and I do. Understand the concerns and the impacts uh that the median control would have to. Certain turning movements, um and I'm not involved in the design of that signal and likely won't be, but I can. Tell you probably from experience that the signal itself at Boardman. Will operate with what we call flashing yellow left turns, so it's the scenario where you have a blinking. Left turn indicator in the left turn lane that's always on, so it's, so if you're coming up. Main Street from the interchange. And you want to turn left onto Boardman. That signal will probably rest in a blinking yellow left turn phase, so essentially what it means is. You can turn left as long as you have a gap and and you can yield. Uh appropriately to the southbound. Movements, um and so I. It's not a, not gonna solve all the concerns that I've heard here this evening, but I I think when you look at how that signal will operate, it's going to favor. The left turn movements from Boardman or from Main Street onto Boardman going westbound. Now, is that gonna solve all the issues we've heard here tonight? Probably not, but certainly gonna make that left turn. Maneuver a lot easier when you're not sitting there waiting for a green, you know, a green indication. Um so that that's one small sort of reality of of how that signal is going to work, is I think we can, we can operate it in a way that's going to favor the left turns. Coming off of Main Street. To help minimize some of the delay and the um you know, the circuitous nature of the turn movements that will be created by the median, so. Just wanted to throw that out there um to the to the extent that it might help ease some concerns.
Thank you, Matt.
Um that is a question, is the primary reason for the light, the safety, is that more than? The the safety aspect of the light more than the traffic flow?
Uh it is, it is probably, yeah, I mean, I think both are are really of concern, um but I do think um. My my sense, you know, I kind of came into this conversation after it had been going on for a while. But yes, I I would say that there's a really strong sense that this is for safety purposes, the RRFE. Has done its job. Um but again, it has created its own level of. Conflict. And and you know, particularly when you see that kind of constant flow. Of students and pretty soon all you've got is the flashing lights and nobody's moving, at that point, nobody's moving except for the pedestrians.
Has there been any conversation about having the high schoolers not use that road and having a different way of coming out on instead of. Um Boardman Avenue, if they're being routed to Columbia Avenue and coming out to Main Street there.
Well, we're talking about track foot traffic more than car traffic.
Oh, yeah, yeah, the flashing light is 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 it is, it is, it is predominantly lunch traffic, lunch pedestrian traffic crossing. There and I, you know, currently when that light. When the RRFE flashes, the students just go and I think a lot of them don't go, they don't cross one to cross the other, they just cross. They, you know, they're coming from the high school predominantly to Sinclair, maybe to Sunrise, I'm not sure. But they're they're crossing to get to where they want to be for that that thirty minutes that they have to grab something to eat and then turn around and go back. So it's about forty-five, I think there's two half hour lunch periods that get back to back and so it's about an hour that you see. Well, ten forty-five to eleven forty-five, I don't remember the exact times, but. It was about an hour and it was pretty steady through that whole hour and and when we were doing more concerted um. Uh look at that pedestrian traffic, it was actually cold. And wet on most of those days, and so I don't think we really captured the full extent of what the impacts can be on nice, warm. Spring or fall day when the students are real are are making more choices to be out and about. Yeah.
Thanks, Dave, nothing?
Um.
Uh anything else to prove, rebuttal?
No.
Okay. Uh we'll close the public one portion of the interview.
Wait, clarify a statement? Sir, can we clarify something for the record? Uh a comment that was made, I think is inaccurate, can we clarify that?
About the, your comment?
About the lunches, that's something you guys are speaking about just now. Uh. Let's just, let's make it very brief.
There's only one lunch that comes out, the other one stays in the in the school, they don't come out there. So it's just the one, the one.
For outside lunches?
Yes, it's closed campus, but.
The other was closed campus?
They're they're looking, they're not here.
Yeah, uh gotcha, gotcha, okay. Okay, um. Question for staff and you want to raise your.
Median barrier?
Mm-hmm.
Is it actually a barrier?
So it'll be a curve, it'll be a curve of some kind, um again, it's it's been in design, the design's not finalized. Um we don't know exactly how, you know, even the median that's proposed there at front, you know, I I don't know if that's just gonna be. Curve height, if it'll be more than that, um one of the things we know we have to account for is when trucks are making a. You know, it's a long truck and it needs to make a right-hand turn coming off the westbound and go north. Uh it's a wide sweeping turn and so it has to be tight enough to front street to not impede that turn. And and yet it has to be far north south to create the right and right out barrier, so it's it's a tight, it's a tight space in there. Um. So I don't know exactly what it will be, I'm fairly confident that that there will be, it will be a curb type. You know, curb type of uh improvement along the turn lane and along Main.
Carla, um.
Yeah.
Sorry, just one more comment to that, I'm again predicated with, I'm not involved in the design, but my guess is it's gonna look. Kind of like the yellow, small yellow rolled curb medians that um are out in Hermiston at the Elm and three ninety-five intersection. Um so if you're northbound on three ninety-five through that intersection, there's there's small. Yellow uh raised kind of rolled curb medians that just kind of spit in between the travel lanes um. Northbound, southbound on three ninety-five, that's more than likely what that median um would look like, given the, given the uh right away constraints we have.
You're talking about the Starbucks intersection?
Yep, Mark McDonald's Starbucks, Jack McLaughlin's, yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you, I didn't know if we were talking like jury barrier.
No, 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 no.
Or the yellow posts that we've seen?
Down the port and then we back over? No.
People still haven't figured that one out.
No, they haven't.
And I, well, even if they have, I don't think they care because they're turning left.
Right, and we're we're working on that one too, so.
So I don't know if this is the right time, uh if we're supposed to say this now or later, but whatever. Um I am, I'm very, very, very bothered by the impact it's gonna have on Sinclair. With that said, because I I I I live on Boardman Avenue. And I use that intersection, I can't tell you how many times a day, I I wouldn't even count, I wouldn't even put it at ten, fifteen, twenty, because I run a business. And I'm through town all day, every day, in every direction, but that that corner right there is is constant and if it weren't for the kids. Because I worry about that almost every day. I see it happening, I know it's gonna happen, one of those kids is gonna get run over, it's it's bound to happen. Um I remember very clearly the whole situation with the death. Five years ago or whatever it was, I I knew the guy that got killed and um. I don't want to ever see that again, especially with a child. And that's the only reason I will vote for this, because. The impact to their business is is gonna be considerable, but I hope that. As long as they've been in the community and as much as they've done for this community and continue to do, I hope that the city does everything they can. To accommodate them in signage in in whatever and understand that that only because they live on the. On the west side of Main. Are they getting the short end of the stick, them and them and Sunrise and everybody on that side, duh. And there's gonna be a new hotel on the other side, so or Village, the Village Inn. Everybody on the south side or on the west side of Main gets gets shorted a little bit until. Until everybody figures out that that life, new new traffic's not gonna, but that's why I hope the city does whatever we can. Um. To, I mean, everything that, everything possible to to help direct people to make the right choice, whether they want to go left or right. Because I use one gas station and there's a reason for that, um. Not right now, I don't, because there's no cost, um but. I still have to vote for it because I I can't, I have to put the children above that because I have kids and um. It 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 would be, it would be a travesty if something happens and and I'm, I still think it probably will before it's over with. And I don't think we can do anything to mitigate it, we can help it, but I don't think we'll stop it because there's so many of them. And it, I don't know what our attendance is this year, but it seems like it grows every year. Um it's 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 just an unfortunate situation all wearing. On, I mean. There, they get all the traffic from the south or from the north headed south. All of all of the RVs coming out of the park go right to these guys, all of the trucks that come up that road go to these guys, they none of them go to Chevron. Unless they have to go to that car lock thing. And then they and they just bind up that whole section, the trucks do, and there's there's more there than I think people realize. I mean, especially when their diesel pumps were on the side. They they get a lot of traffic, they get a lot of traffic at night with trucks stopping just to get food, fill up with coffee and things of that nature, there's a whole bunch of it. And so I just hope we do our due diligence to to complete them as much as we can to help them. And understand everything on the west side is gonna get, is gonna be affected. And we can't afford to lose them, obviously. Because we don't have, you know, there's there's, we're at a minimum anyway for the amount of people we have, so anyway, that's my two cents. And it's probably worth more, a little more, four cents maybe, but. Um that's all, I just, I just want to make sure I had that, said that.
Yeah, I I I'd honestly, I'd like to hear from every commission member with the impact, I mean. So um I'll get someone else, Mike, you're okay, that's okay. I am for the light, um but to P Zoda, I am not for the barrier. And for the median barrier, um. I I think the the light does need to happen at some point, I think it's a good place for a light. But that barrier, I I can't, I can't justify it with the effect that it's gonna have on on the businesses. Um and I mean, if I I I know that if I were over there, if I if I owned this in there, I'd be steaming right about now. Because I realize that that a lot of, a lot of the traffic that does come into Boardman, to that Sinclair is not from Boardman. Boardman people, yeah, they're gonna figure it out, not a problem, but the people that are coming right off the freeway, there's there's, they're gonna go to. They're gonna go to the the Chevron, that's just the way it is, I mean, I would. So so yeah, I until that, until that meeting comes out, I I can't see my way to to voting for this.
You have some opinion?
I'm just, I'm right down the middle of this, um I just think that this is a safety thing, I think that. I just wish there was something that we could do differently because of the kids versus the traffic, if it's not a traffic thing and it's only, I would keep. I just think we need to figure out, would be great to figure out how the kids. Can, I don't know, the kids, the kids.
Elevated, what was?
I think that with the light, the kids are gonna be just as reckless and they're they're gonna cross against the light because that's what kids do. It's gonna be helpful, absolutely helpful with the light when it comes to helping traffic. Because that's the part that I can't stand is when I'm coming out, I was the district and I'm coming out on that road from the high school, getting on the Main Street sometimes can take forever. Especially that high traffic time, so that is when the light would be great, but. You have to have such a huge impact on the two. Uh gas stations, um it would, it would be a significant, significant shortage to Saint Clair. It's obvious that we get more traffic from. Uh I mean, according to where you're from, the arena, so. I don't know, I just think if the kids, if we can figure out a different solution for how the kids are not allowed off campus.
Yeah, that's, that's.
They do that at high school all the time, there's a lot of high schools that do not, they're closed campuses. Um if there's a way that we can get different stores or convenience, I know that's a whole other can work, but what if there is, there's all that area over there, they're thinking the other. Community stores or chocolate restaurants or stuff, I don't, I know that's. Probably not even a solution, but it's the kids that are the problem, not necessarily traffic.
If the safe is the concern, have we looked at other options for being able to cross Main Street? Because I know that in some areas, they have a tunnel underneath literally, or they have a bridge on the top. And I don't know what the costs associated with those things are probably pretty significant. Um but have those have those options been looked at at all?
There's no right of way for that kind of.
There's no what?
There's no right of way for that kind of. Most basic.
Oh yeah. Sam, right now, thoughts?
Uh just knowing what happens at that specific intersection with the pedestrian traffic, and it's not just kids. Uh you know, I, there's adults there that don't push the button and and being in the the. Field that I am in, uh I responded to the call that was talked about, uh I hear. Uh, I hear the driving complaints of those close calls, things like that. And so it, it does happen more often than not. Uh, Chief Stover was a much better resource for that, but uh. Uh. Yeah, it's not just the safety of kids, it's. Cuz we do have a lot of pedestrian traffic. Uh, specifically in summer when the weather's nice. Uh, I know a lot of tourists, they, they bike up to. Uh, bike or walk from the arena up to Sinclair or Chevron, C and D, places like that. So, uh, uh, general public safety.
Right now, any thoughts?
Well, I just, I guess I, maybe I just don't understand it enough or I'm, can't conceptualize it. It just seems like. Uh, putting the right in, um, right out in there, it just, I don't know if that. I'm, I'm, I'm sure it does, but um, it just all seems so tight in there anyway. In that whole intersection with C and D and everything. Um, so I don't know how you. Um. Um, for then the trucks to go around, around about, uh, not around about, but. The right and right out, how that. Yeah, huh, they have enough room to do all that. I don't know, anyway. And it, we just say, just the kids, um, which somebody has just said it's not, it's, um. I mean, they'd hate it, but you just take a crosswalk guard there and. Make them crosswalk with that. I mean, it's, it's a terrible thing, but for that hour or whatever you need. Just put an adult there saying, no, stop it, don't go, wait. You know, um, if you're just looking at that much time of. Just the school, school year, you know, when they're in session. I don't know.
Uh, maybe this was a question for uh Matt, but the, the. I know we aren't down in the nitty gritty of the, the building process of this yet. Uh, to accommodate the increased traffic and specifically truck traffic in that intersection. Is there going to be any widening of it? I see in this, in this uh drawing where we have to cut out the extra parking stalls.
Right.
On the north side of Boardman. Uh, but looking at it, it doesn't look like. Uh, there's any significant widening of the intersection itself.
So there's not a lot of available right of way. We are, but on Boardman Avenue in particular, um. Because we are taking out parking. In front of C and D and then in front of the old City Hall and Smiley's, we do get to the three lanes. So the protected um, east westbound and then, and then the protected turn lanes. So we're trying to make as much use of the right of way that we have there and, and we're doing that by eliminating that on-street parking. Um, there is already a turn line on Main. Um, so we're just kinda maintaining that. Of course, it'll all be, it'll all be re-striped. Um, new pavement will have new striding, but the old pavement will have new striding too. To more, more clearly delineate where those, those lines are. So, yeah, but there's no, the built environment doesn't allow us to acquire the additional right of way.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I would love to see us have a sign right there that says no truck traffic because the trucks are gonna be a mess here. And, and honestly, I don't know, I don't know what their purpose is up there, except to get some to eat. That's what most of them do. But when you have a truck coming from the port and they're in that left-hand turn lane to turn left in front of C and D. Now they have that small lane right there and we have cars backed up coming from the high school to turn left. That truck's not gonna make that corner. There's no way. Not if those people are sitting where they're, where they're normally are when you pull up to a light. I mean, it's, 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 it's a, that's why there's no truck, that's why there's no trucks allowed to turn left onto Elm at McDonald's. Oh, they're not supposed to anyway. And it's because that lane gets really small when you turn left with a truck.
Are you talking about the trucks that are parking on the, on the, in the lot behind Chevron? Yeah, we've had a lot of conversation about that. We don't have a. Specific plan yet, but we are trying to identify how to.
Mitigate that?
Uh, mitigate it, if not eliminate.
So I'll smoke you to put a fence around it. I mean, that won't stop them. I mean, I had to put up no trespassing signs on the lot right across from that, that, that Renee Grace owns. Because people were camping there with their, with, and I, three no trespassing signs eliminated.
Yeah.
Just period.
No, we, we recognize the impact that. Parking is creates.
Yeah.
Uh, my own personal thing on this, um. I'm with Mike and, and, and everyone else with safety and traffic, um, I think it's. Super important. I've lived here for many years, uh, dragged through town all the time. Cause I recognize it as an issue. Um. I think everyone's always joked about, ooh, who's gonna get his first truck, right? Um, I've made many jokes on it personally. Uh, great source of amusement, but uh definitely agree that. We need to do something. Uh, I don't know that this is the right thing or the best thing. It's what's before us today. I'm, again, I'm not a super big fan of blocking. Left-hand turn traffic into, um, specifically, uh. Northwest Front Street. Um, I, I agree with a lot of this one. I feel like it will be very impactful. Um, on businesses and I think we, you know, this is. Still a very small town, I consider us, rely on small businesses, uh, and community efforts. I think that should be recognized. I don't know if the juice is worth the squeeze to be frank on it. Um. I know every good decision has to give a date, uh, and you're never gonna change everyone. Uh. Tough enough to crack. I don't know. I would like to get a sense from other commissioners, like, what? The holdup, is, is it the light? Is it the left-hand turn? Is it both? Is it lack of other options, like?
That's freeway, freeway traffic, new people that, that, that we see a lot of, especially in the summer. From now till October, we'll see a phenomenal amount of people that have never been here before. And those people not, not knowing how to access the south or the west side of the city and the thing about me. And that obviously includes these guys, which is, and they're, they're as major part of this community as anybody. So, that's the only part that, that really concerns me. I mean, if there's a way through the city where we can, we can help. That, uh, send that traffic and it makes, it's so clear, you know, that, that we have a huge sign that says city center next left. And that means coming down Boardman to their, to their business and around to hers. And Ace and, and all of it, Smiley's, everybody's. Um. We have to do that. We just have to because that, that part of town's not gonna survive if we don't, if we don't do something to help it. I mean, it's just, that's my opinion, cuz I live on that side of town. Um. Yeah.
So Zach, to your, to your comment, um, for me, the light is not the, not the problem. I think the light is fine. Um, it's the, it's the access to Front Street. That's, the, the, the effect that it will have on those businesses will be substantial and I'm not. Uh, we don't have that many businesses in town, not willing to, to, you know, significantly damage to them.
I agree, and you said, back to how I can break this.
Yeah, I think the, that's a lot of, that is the, the issue.
Right now, what about you? Sounds like the majority of us, person don't necessarily have issue with. The light itself or the traffic revision at Boardman and Main, but it's the left-hand turn.
Yeah, yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm with everybody. It's the light doesn't bother me. It's the, just the access. In that, um. Just seems like you need more room or something, um, then if you had more room, then you could. To get, to let the traffic have access to everybody. But because you're in such a tight space and you're trying to. Yeah, and make it work, that, that's how they're getting cut out.
Unfortunately, that's how Boardman was designed a long time ago. And everything started on the north side of the freeway. The only thing we had on the south side when we moved here was Circle K, which is where the library is now. And that was it. I mean, there was nothing over there. The grocery store was even downtown, uh, in, across from Smiley's. When I first moved here, so.
Yeah, yeah.
The way it's designed and that's a shame because we don't have that distance between turns that, that other places have the, have the. Have the, um, advantage of, we just don't have it.
Can I, can I ask the, the businesses a question? Is that okay?
Yeah, I mean, it's a liberation, really.
Okay. Would you, would you guys, if, if we needed to. Come up with a different plan, we needed more room on Main, Main Street, would you be willing to give up some of your property for an Eastman so we could? We'd have more options?
Uh, if we could forego the median, absolutely.
Would that be a question from Matt?
So, yeah, I would, Mike's not with us tonight. Um. I think that's probably more a question for Mike, but Matt might be able to respond to it. I guess my initial response to. It's not about needing a shallow way. There's three lanes of, of available space there. There's no on-street parking on Main. Um, but I wouldn't encourage parking there. And if you wanted parking, that would eliminate their accesses off of Main. So remember also that we're trying to balance a, a number of parts and pieces here. So, um, ODOT's, ODOT's ask would be that we close Front Streets and that we close access along Main Street. We're trying to preserve Front Streets to ride in, ride out and preserve Main Street access.
Do they give you any, when they say close Front Streets? That's a major thing here. So what, what would their, what would their alternative be? Or what, what, they don't give us one? I, I mean, how much do we have to listen to them? I mean, we own the, it's, it's in our city, right?
Yes, but we also have an interchange. And but for the interchange, where, where would help people get to Boardman? I mean, this is a, this is a relationship.
Yeah, and we are a freeway town.
We are a freeway town and that with, with being a freeway town, just like being a highway town, there are. There are impacts that come with that. And so this is, this is a two-way relationship.
Yeah, just, it's got, it's got a bad feeling though when somebody that doesn't live here is telling us what, what we should do and how it, how it affects us. Makes no difference to them because they're not here.
And when they're not willing to do the thing that they need to do, which is increase the size of the bridge.
Yeah, I, I should dump them.
Matt, would you add anything to that comment?
Build a new bridge.
Yeah, um, I, I guess I would say, you know, if you boil this whole area down, the, the. The offending issue in all, in all points is how close Front Street exists to the interchange. Um, journals. If Front Street didn't exist, um, you know, a, a lot of what we're talking about here would go away. But, um, it does. And so I, I think to the point that someone was making earlier about ODOT. You know, they're not here tonight. Um, I guess I can speak for them in one regard, and that is. They do have some jurisdictional control over local streets. That can, has, that have, either are or have the potential to negatively impact the safety and operations of the freeway. And if you get into a scenario where a local street and a traffic issue on a local street has or is. Causing queue spillback on an off-ramp at certain times of the day and that off-ramp. Queue spillback on that off-ramp can affect the main line, then you've got a really major safety concern. And that's where. I think ODOT's concern relies primarily. They're not here to destroy businesses. And they're not here to make hardships, but what they are here to do is protect the safety and the operations of the, of the through traffic. On the main line of the highway. Um, so I, I guess if you look at Front Street, it's kind of the offending um, element here. Uh, and I think what, what, what the city's trying to do is the right solution is, okay, we know we can't just close Front Street. And I know, I think in a, in the perfect world, if there's an option to not closing it, ODOT would allow the city to do that. And in this case. Turning Front Street into right-in, right-out by putting a median across it. Is the compromised solution and ODOT has, has compromised like that in many locations. Over, uh, you know, throughout the state. And so. What, what happens though is when you make fr- fr- Front Street a right-in, right-out, you inadvertently. Shift and redistribute traffic along Main Street. And what is the intersection that all that redistribution? Goes to? Well, it's gonna go to Boardman. So now you've got a situation where converting front, keeping Front Street open by converting it to right-in, right-out. You've redistributed the, the, the circulation and the demands to the next available intersection, which is Boardman. And that increased demand over time, along with all the growth that Boardman can expect over the next fifteen to twenty years. Is gonna push that, that demands to levels where. Signalization of that intersection is gonna be needed to, you know, allow traffic movements to occur in, in an efficient way. Then you've got this pedestrian crossing issue that's continuing to, um, you know, occur over time. It really just sort of boils down to the only way you can manage everything in, uh, in a system-wide level is to. Manage it through medians, manage it through, um, traffic control. And manage it through better, um, pedestrian crossing management. So. Uh, it's, it, but as Carla has pointed out, the, it's the balanced solution here because there is no perfect solution that doesn't create. You know, at least some, some impact to certain elements of the system.
May I ask Mike a question?
That's Matt.
Matt, sorry, Matt.
Yeah.
I apologize.
No problem.
Um, Matt, so is, is ODOT looked at expanding the on-ramp?
I, I can't say what ODOT has or has not looked at. Um, I, I think in reality, ODOT hasn't had to look at it yet. That's the problem. Um, there hasn't been a scenario where, um, you know, that, that i- is, is. That's been a critical issue. Um. When there is a solution that helps to minimize, you know, the potential for queue spillback on the off-ramp, they certainly will look for it. And in this case, I think the solution is to help manage, better manage the local system. Uh, but I can't say whether or not ODOT has had any ongoing problems or, or design endeavors to widen that off-ramp. I, I can't say that if they did widen it. It's only gonna get them so far because what they really need to do is widen the overpass. Um, and, you know, get that, get that overpass widened. But I don't think that's the reality in the near term. And, um, and so it, it kinda goes back to the local system, so.
I'm curious. Why isn't it?
Uh, yeah.
Why isn't it a, a, an option? I mean, or, uh, uh, reality, not a reality, but, but something to think about. I mean, I know it's expensive. Obviously. But Boardman makes money. We have the loss of revenue. I don't know. What the estimation is or anything, it's obviously gonna be a loss of revenue for local businesses, but we're talking about over fifteen, twenty years. What's, what's the impact of, of not doing anything? Versus doing a traffic revision and having that impact which will have significant. Impact over the long term. I, I'm not sure I understand that position. And I understand you don't speak for ODOT. Totally get that. I, I don't know that we can make that argument or at least sit here and, and, you know. Say to each other, that's not a valid argument to, to not look at the negative impact of our local businesses. In, even in regards to, you know, interchange area, traffic revision.
I, I think what I would, I look at, I look at Boardman's, or Boardman's coming up to, to a bit of a reckoning with itself here. Um. You know, it wasn't too many years ago where, you know, the, the, all, the news was Boardman doesn't have enough housing. Um, to support the jobs that it generates. And that's probably still the case. Um. And I, I think that's changing, right? The Port of Morrow has consistently, and keeps consistently growing. And, you know, now Boardman is adding more housing. We're starting to see the effects of growth. And when you have a, a community like Boardman that's bisected by the freeway with only two ways to cross it. Um, with, and, and. With and in minimal other opportunities, you know, at your disposal. Um, without some major improvements, now you're starting to see the impacts of growth and. Poor planning that has occurred or I say, I may not say poor planning, but lack of of of, you know, regional. Um. Circulation planning. This is the impact of it. So. I'm not saying this is a solution, um, but Boardman is about ready to undergo and update to its transportation system plan. And that's going to be more of a comprehensive look at overall circulation in the community um over the next twenty years. And one of the things that's probably going to get a hard look. Um, as part of that T S P, which I'll I'll toot my horn and say I'm going to be helping the city work on that. Is um, what how do we improve? Circulation across the freeway. And that's going to look at that that opportunity in multiple ways. It's going to look at, all right, should we widen Main Street? Should we widen the overpass? What are the costs of doing that? Should we improve the Laurel Lane underpass in some way, shape or form? Or should we look at a third alternative such as, for example, can we? Put an undercrossing of I eighty-four at Olson Road or an over another overcrossing? Um, there's any number of of things to look at. Now, they all cost a lot of money and they're all not. Easily attainable solutions, but I think that's what Boardman is going to need to start grappling with. Um, in the long run to help minimize the demand that right now is limited to Main Street for most intents and purposes. So what we're talking about here this evening, I think, is kind of a near-term fix to an existing problem. That's only going to continue to get worse over time. And so this issue that we're talking about here on Main Street is going to have to be coupled with a lot of other harder. Major regional circulation improvement needs over time to help manage the growth in the in. In the lack of of circulation and access that Boardman currently has right now. So. I don't know if that helps or or what muddies the water.
I'm sorry.
Wouldn't it make sense to do it proactive instead of reactive? Why wait until it's so bad that we have to spend the twenty-five million to make it wider or another overpass? Rather than do it now and and be ready for what's coming? I mean, everybody, everybody says, everybody sees Boardman growing. We see all of the new homes, all of the apartments, they're filling up as fast as can be. And we have two ways in and out of here. It's why why wait until it's so bad? I don't I don't understand. I mean, because you know, the state, the state on some level would would help us. They'd have to. I mean, they do everywhere else. I mean, Portland spent a half billion dollars to rebuild. Whatever bridge that one was that goes over to OHSU uh years ago. And granted, I'm not saying we're Portland, but on a relative scale, uh apples to apples. We're generating. Income, jobs, uh that defy what what's happening in the world with 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 uh the economy. So. I just think I just think wait, 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 wait until something bad or until it's until it's absolutely necessary. We have no choice.
So we're not waiting. We've been having that conference. The city's been having that conversation with ODOT. Since two thousand and seven, maybe before that, but in two thousand and seven, when the I A M P didn't get adopted. And then in two thousand and nine, when they came back and refined it and it did get adopted. That that comfort that was kind of the culmination of the conversation then. And that conversation has continued. The city has not been silent with ODOT for the last fifteen years. Um, the waiting list to do projects like widen an overpass bridge is long. And. We're, I would say we're on the list. But we haven't made it to the critical part of the list, which is the STIF, the State Transportation Improvement Plan. And that's a six-year list. We haven't gotten there yet. It but I guess. I I I would push back a little bit and say, we have been having those conversations with ODOT. ODOT knows we need to widen bridge. Um. I don't know when that's going to happen. I wish I could tell you, yep, we're on the list. It's going to happen in twenty twenty-nine. But we're not on that list. All we can do is keep pushing at ODOT. We can keep poking the bear and saying, here's the issue. We need to get on that list. We need to figure out how to move this up that list. I think updating the T S P, which. You know, we applied for a grant last year. We're not successful in getting it. We applied again in this round and we were successful in getting it. I do think ODOT. Sees the growth that's happening here and I think they know they're going to have to address these issues. I think a new T S P and I'm glad I'm glad Matt's on board with that. Um, because I think he does understand the issues of Boardman. He's done a number of traffic. Projects in Eastern Oregon and in Morrow and Boardman, or Morrow County and Boardman over the past ten. I've worked with Matt about on twenty twenty years. I've worked with Matt on a variety of projects. He understands the region. And I think we're we're gonna, when we update that T S P, we're gonna continue to make a case that. ODOT needs to improve the ramps. That's start to improve the ramps. But they also need to figure out how to widen the deck. But at this point, the last time I heard a tentative number, it was twenty-five billion dollars. City doesn't have twenty-five billion dollars and it's not ours to improve. It's ODOT's to improve. So I think. I'm going to suggest you guys, we we wrap this up, you guys take a motion, we we make a decision tonight. Because I think we'll be in the things that are beyond the scope of what's in view. We're not going to solve those problems tonight. We're not.
Well, I'm not asking to solve them. I just I just want I just want reassurance that they're being addressed and. You know, what are you talking about until until we're blue in the face for the next twenty years? As long as, but something's got to be done because we're impacting. Business, our community, our businesses, the people that work there at those businesses and. My ability to get biscuits and gravy on a Saturday morning is a problem.
All right, well, I I definitely agree with Carla. Like, there's. We don't want to fight too much here. Uh, we should get on with with some kind of synergy. Basically, we have four options we can choose. We can choose to make a motion and accept as presented, make a motion to accept as with uh any number of amendments. We can uh make a motion to deny outright or we can uh continue the matter. One at a time, deliberation or discussion is warranted. Those are the options we have. Firstly, I I think we should continue the matter. I feel like there's like totally a little more to for that to think on it and I don't. Think such a big decision should be made without due diligence on our part.
I would be okay with continuing the matter or or going ahead with an amendment that we don't. That there's the stoplight we can put in, but the the um.
Ride right out.
The barriers, we don't, we don't address without those.
Yeah, that's going to be applied with ODOT then probably.
But it seems like we're we're trying to always pacify ODOT and ODOT doesn't have any skin in the game. And so I that's that's me. I mean, I've I've seen this. It's the same thing with the B P A lines. It's, you know. It's these big guys that come in and say, we're going to do this, we're going to do this and never do, but it's always this big threat.
So we are, we have to, we have to understand we're a freeway town and we're built on that freeway and who runs the freeway?
But they're not.
Not Boardman. ODOT does.
They're not gonna, they're not gonna get rid of the freeway.
No, no, we wouldn't exist.
But they could come in and close Front.
So dealing with what's in front of us right now, would we rather have front streets shut down or restricted to have? I'd like to make a motion that we table it for further discussion. Um, because I don't feel comfortable voting either way yet. I really don't.
So a couple of things, if you if you want to move forward with that motion, I would ask that you set a time date and time specific so we preserve our notice. And then I would want you to delineate um as part of your deliberation on that motion, what additional information you're looking for.
For the for the date, would there be any issue to uh continue it to the to the maybe the next meeting?
No, that the continuing to next month would be fun.
Would it be uh, would it be bullish for us to ask to have ODOT have a representative here?
No.
To better to better explain their point or their 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 skin in the game, as you put it?
I can absolutely ask an ODOT representative to come.
Awesome.
Any other requests? Of staff or specific questions? In regards to the the president of the plan? I feel sorry for the staff. It has to go between the two.
I think Ryan is trying to.
Yeah, I just wanted to, I just wanted to make sure I heard right. It is. Okay, if we um a table it, put it off another, we're not. Cause there's not a deadline that we're butting up against to that. We don't make a decision tonight. There's not. Money or ODOT doesn't continue. We're we're okay to. To do it at next month.
I think we're okay and continuing to make. Um, I think beyond that, we're pushing against our our bid, our bid schedule.
Okay.
Okay.
So so right, this would just be a just a straight uh continuation of the matter. Effectively pause until the May meeting, which would be May.
With the stipulation of having uh ODOT rep. Uh, invited to to answer questions that we may have.
Yeah, and I mean, we should entertain a motion for that with this, yeah, stipulations.
Yeah, what I would ask for is that there be a clear motion to continue to time date and place specific so we can preserve our notice. And then as part of your deliberation before you vote, just let me know what it is you're looking for. Um, as additional information um at that on that at that time.
So what we're probably looking for, if I understand it correctly, is how we can have the light without having the um. Mistake in turn.
I think another thing I heard. A couple of times was. Not necessarily the right and right outs, but specifically the left-hand turn on the south end of the intersection. The feasibility of leaving the right in, right out on Front. And allowing a left turn on Main. Is that something ODOT can speak to?
Yeah, I I'm not following the configuration there.
The left-hand turn on Main Street.
So allowing of so allowing the left and the Sinclair.
Allowing the left, but keeping the right and right out on Front. Can ODOT speak to that? If ODOT is adamant about.
ODOT or 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 city engine, our motion.
I understand long-term get that. Is that something that they can speak to specifically?
Uh huh. The light without the median. Yeah.
Right.
Is there a possibility of starting with just the light and if it doesn't work, then I'll move it later.
I'd be out there. I'm not going to endeavor. If if you guys want to continue this, we want folks, folks to think it could be light, then yeah.
I think that was a big. Point to follow, you know, the.
With ease a lot of the information being asked. So uh we would need to entertain a motion from uh one of the commissioners. And so what I'm hearing is to clarify uh is to. Continue the matter until uh it would be May fifteenth uh here uh at uh City Boardman's signal uh at seven P M. Uh, or continuation of the matter with specifics in regard to uh. Input from ODOT in general. Input from ODOT and or staff, city staff in regards to the median. Left-hand turn lane. Was there anything else? Unless. Okay. So we would need to entertain that motion.
All right, I I move that we table until the next meeting.
You're you're moving to continue.
Moving to continue. I apologize. Moving to continue. Until the next meeting with these with um more information from staff. About how we can still put in the light, but have different options for that. We're not having um no left turns.
I need a time, a place in your motion.
Okay. At seven P M. On May fifteenth. Here in this. Yeah, Council Hall, City Hall. There we go. Thank you.
Also with the stipulation of ODOT being here.
Oh, and also with the stipulation of ODOT being here.
I think that.
We're posting, right. Uh, okay, so we have a motion or a second. Uh, we must vote. We vote all over the.
Commissioner.
You're still waiting.
I've got a hand cramp. Yeah. Commissioner Connell?
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner tonight?
Yes.
Commissioner Irons?
Yes.
And Commissioner Breezy?
Yes.
And Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Uh, next word of business, would he be discussing items from staff?
Um, so if you want to do public comment first, if anything, anyone wants to get out here, wants to make a comment other than what's on the agenda, they can. It is after nine thirty. Um, let's let's swap six and seven in the order.
Uh. Public comment time. If you'd like to make a comment, uh, this is outside of the um, the the public meeting. But in common time, if anyone would like to step to the microphone.
I need to comment that thank you for taking the time and listen to what we have to say.
Very appreciate you coming in. Appreciate your voice. I'll say something, please. Did I say my name again?
No.
So I didn't.
Well, actually, yeah, for our honest audience and recording, please, yes.
So Alex Hatner, one twenty-two, seventeen Street, Dogg Regan. Um, you know, Washington Jewish News, ready, we're trying times. Support your troops, law enforcement, first responders, appreciate your truck drivers. Um, the world keeps moving. Everyone wants to be safe. There's some sketchy stuff going on outside of our comfort zone. So just. You know, take that for what it's worth, but uh anybody in your military, giving kudos for being there.
Appreciate that. Any other public comments?
About anything?
This this is open bullet comments. Yes.
No, I'm all right.
Thank you all very much for joining us. This is a lively audience. We'd like to have you not have. It's a long, long meeting, so thank you. Thank you. Thank you, there's, appreciate your listeners. Thank you. We're done? Public comment portion is. Mission comment. We're getting there. Oh, I guess tonight is a team, so online audience and uh these are being swiped, but she's been for her. She just ran.
I've got one for Ragnar and one for Jennifer.
Just a bill I don't want.
No, it's it it I will explain it here. And Ragnar, you don't have the two things I'm handing out, but I'll try my best to explain them and they're available if you come by. They got a completely hot chance.
Okay.
So what I'm handing out right now is I had somebody ask the question. Why do we meet on Wednesday nights? And my initial response was because we have to. And then I went, well, I don't know that. So I dug into the development code, which is attached to the memorandum I just handed you. And it actually just says that you guys get to set set the day of the meeting as a group. You guys can decide what you want to meet. Um, and you've already decided in May, you're going to meet on the fifteenth at seven P M because you continue something. But what I'm saying is that in June. Our normal regular meeting is on Juneteenth, which is now a federal holiday, which the city recognizes. So we we're not having a June meeting. We're going to meet a week earlier in July. That was part of what we had set up for the calendar for this year. But having gotten this question and and having looked at it a little bit, a little bit and said, well, I don't know why we need on the third Wednesday. Of the month. And we don't have to. So when you when you look at the. The municipal code. There are um. This portion of municipal municipal code governs the planning commission. And it says, this is who will be on the planning commission. These are the kind of people that can serve on the planning commission. Um, that you guys elect a president, vice president, um, and that you have a secretary. Um, and you will. Um, and you elect them and that there's some foreign requirements, um, what we do to remove a member. Are there restrictions on membership, the employment as staff, powers of the commission? So on and so forth. I will tell you, there are several things in here that are actually in violation of current state law. Who knew, right? So um, I, we're, we're gonna update this. Okay, I'm just gonna share, uh, we're, we're gonna update this document. Um, we're focused on updating a lot of things. And when I read this, I went, ooh, no, you can't call a meeting and have it three hours. That's a clear violation of public notice requirement. So we're gonna ex-nay on that. Um, but we, we can look at some other things here. But I guess the question I'm posing for you, I guess there's two questions. One. You willing to do a little work to update these, these thoughts, these, this, the, these three pages? I would love it if you'd take what I just handed you home and read through it and put some red pen on it and ask some questions about it and bring it back in May. We'll, we'll, it's kind, this is kind of homework. Take it home, scribble on it, read it, bring it back, hand it in. With your notes. Um, we'll look at that and then we'll come back at, in the July meeting or the August meeting and we'll kind of, we'll provide a red. Red line version of this for you guys to look at and, and we'll move forward with some changes. In the short term though, we have had a question. Could we meet on a different night? Yeah, I mean, I, it doesn't matter to me. I, if, if somebody wants to back up to who asked the question, they can, but I'm not gonna put them out there.
I was gonna say it was me. Well, yeah, exactly. That's, that's the weird thing.
The new guy.
Hey, it's always the new guy. But yeah, and I, if. So uh, I have four Tuesdays or Thursdays, i- if anybody wants to.
Yeah, that's your bet. I mean, no, Wednesday, seven o'clock. You don't mess me up. But I, I barely remember this one.
I would, I would personally, I would not be opposed to Thursdays. They work better for me. I, I miss something. I believe every one's had this, every time I learned these things.
Yeah, and a lot of religious things go on on Wednesday nights.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was surprised when this meeting was on Wednesday, because Wednesday has always been church night. Whi- whichever church you belong to, I'm not being. You know, I'm not picking on any one denomination here. There's a lot of denominations that have church on Wednesday night. I, 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 I attended church virtually in Ohio and guess what? Parents' night is Wednesday. I miss, I miss Wednesday night.
If you said it to different nights, it's gonna be the same night. Yeah, every time.
I would have came to meetings earlier since seven P M.
Yeah, I work, something, I can work, so, I mean, I'm still working.
And I think, I think that with a lot of people that do work, even people that are gonna attend the meeting, it might be difficult for.
There aren't a lot of communities though that have planning commission as early as five or by thirty.
I normally don't let this thing, I mean, normally.
Yeah, we've had, we've had some tough issues. I mean, really, since I've been here over the past two years, we've had some tough issues and we've had a number of meetings. I don't like meetings to run more than two hours, because frankly, I'm toast at this point in time and. So, you know, I, I would certainly advocate for an earlier meeting, so that when we do have something that runs a little late, we're not running till ten. You know, running till nine would at least we still get home and not be on it over there, Mr. Carl.
I do that at noon.
So, so I'm not looking for a decision on this front either, but I guess I'm raising the issue that we could have a conversation. About what a different night, with a different time, you know, is there something else we can do that would be? I know Zach, you're always running in right at seven o'clock and I, I, for several of you, I know, I, I know it's hard even to get here at seven. Getting here earlier might not work. If it was a different night, would it work better? And would it work better on a different night if we did start at six? So we're not gonna make a decision tonight. I'm not looking for that, but I wanted to put it out there and say, we don't have to meet third Wednesday. You know, if there's, if there's a different Wednesday that works better, if there's a different night that works better. I mean, in, in the memo, I said Thursday, not because I'm looking for Thursday, just as a. You know.
For the record, I'm completely easy out of care, what night. Honestly, I make my own schedule, so I can, I can be here whenever.
Thursday would work best for me on, or Tuesday, I would agree, but Wednesday for, is horrible.
Um, I don't have really much, I prefer Tuesday versus the Thursday, but I, I seriously, it would matter either way either. Just Thursday is the last day of school sometimes, having a school week, but really truly not very often, I'm leaning in.
That's purpose. I would never be here on Tuesday. I wouldn't be able to zoom in, so I would have to.
So I'm hearing Tuesday doesn't work.
Well, it does.
Do you wanna think, uh, just like mull it over and, and come back with that?
No, we don't have time. We don't have time the next meeting, because we're gonna be busy with this thing, other thing.
Well, Matt, uh, what I, what I, what I would tell you is on the seventeenth, you're gonna need a plan to be here until at least ten.
Yeah.
We, we've got, we'll continue this and we'll have two new actions. So we will, we will be busy on the fifteenth.
Alright, we need to talk about this scheduling. Then I say Thursday.
That's gonna be a long night.
If we started earlier on a Thursday, um, just in general, I, that'd be fine.
I'm not opposed to like six o'clock on Thursday. Can you make a Thursday?
I don't care. Yeah.
Thursday six, Thursday six P M. So Ragnar, how about you? Started the night six P M, work for you?
I don't care.
Oh, cool. That was easy.
Okay, so we will bring back, so I would think the third, let, third, keep it within their week, third, Thursday. We will bring back a refined calendar that would be implemented and we will add the June meeting and we'll put July back to the third week. So we'll, in May, we'll bring a calendar back that'll look at the, you're, you're making notes, right?
Third, Thursday at six P M, starting July.
June.
Starting June and including July, back to the third.
Back to the third week. So we'll, we'll bring a new calendar that has that be placed to adopt in May.
I like it. That shouldn't take very long here.
Okay, so the envelope that I handed you, um, you guys, not all of you, they, they, I don't know what the list they went off, but we only got five letters. So I still have a letter for Ragnar and Jennifer, so that means they missed, well, David, you're new, they didn't send one to David Landstrom either. And Jamie, they missed you. So the newest one, it's this letter here, it's from W F A. It just simply says that the legislature took temporary action to protect cities who have improved trails. So it was determined that um, there's a liability risk. And so the legislature took some temporary action that, that actually sunset till January one of twenty twenty-six. Um, and in the meantime, the legislature has to come up with another plan um, relative to how um, risk is mitigated. For ci- not just cities, but um, cities and counties that have improved trails. And it, it's a risk insurance situation, so. Why, if you council about them and you got them. You know, trails like improved trails, so like the Company River Heritage Trail or.
Right.
Things like that. But the city, Boardman does not have any improved trails. It's not sidewalks, it's improved trails. So it's a recreational nature, yeah.
Yeah, like the, or walk path.
No.
No?
No.
Okay.
Well, the heritage trail is part of the walk path.
Right, but the heritage trail is not.
That's part of the heritage trail.
The heritage trail is not a city here, is not a city trail.
But they use the walk path for a section of it.
Yes. Yes, it's kind of, Ma- Martin and I talked about that a little bit. It's kind of a funky situation, but it is not the city's improved trail.
So it doesn't affect us.
It doesn't, it really, in totality, it doesn't, that'll affect us. Hmm, not as soon as we don't have improved trails. That'll be a park, not an improved trail.
Oh, I heard there would be trail on it.
But it'll be part of a park.
Oh, so then down?
Well, parks are, parks have, have a different insurance mechanism. As I understand, again, I'm trying to be good as that too, so had some conversations with. Um, Martin about that. Anyway, eh, you opened around, I, I really considered not giving them to, not giving that to you, but they were addressed to you. So I did my due diligence under federal mail, mail law and applied to your mail. Feel free to dispose of that appropriately. Okay, I think that's it for the planning official report. Uh, other than I would say that Nancy and I did have a quick conversation today about. Today or yesterday, um. About starting to put together some kind of regular monthly report that would actually be written, that we would provide to you, that would capture. The activity you don't see. So how many developer new permits did we issue? How many type two permits did we issue? That required notice but didn't come to you for a decision.
Great idea.
And then, and then um, we would incorporate the conclusions of type three actions. So things that you did through, we would capture what got approved. And then as time progresses, as any of those developments. Um, that you wanna know more about, we could include that in there as well as how development concludes, you know. The platform we can't, you know, we approved this partition nine months ago, we finally signed the flat. And then up how a portion of that monthly report that would address kind of the big picture stuff that we're starting to do. So T S P update, updates to the development code, comp plan, all of that good stuff.
I don't know how much of that would be for, for that. Um, I, I think it would be appreciated, at least by me, I would appreciate it. Include it like in the minutes.
Very good.
Um.
Is, is that?
It wouldn't be part of the minutes, it would be.
Information.
It, it would be informa- it would be, it would be an actual report document that you would get as part of the planning official report. So instead of you just throwing a couple of things at you like I've done the last couple of months, you'd actually get a written report. It would be no more than two pages. It'll be an actual written report. And I'm still gonna throw stuff like this at you. But it would al- there would always be a consistent kind of reporting that we're doing.
We're busy a hundred percent of the time, I can guarantee that. Yeah, and every time, we, we might have like. Half a day of a, a little bit of a break and then we get something big going and then right back up again and. Picking up and getting ready for the next meeting and. Well, we're already getting ready for next month's meeting and this meeting hasn't.
Right, we sent a notice for the May meeting to the paper by this Friday. I mean, mail notice to John and property owners next Tuesday. For the May, I mean, we're already, um, I've been three months for the last twenty years. So you're always living in the month that just concluded, because you're still wrapping it up. You're living in the current month, but you're already preparing for the next month. So it's, it's this ongoing three-month. Um, cycle that you're always dealing with. So, yeah.
Thank you.
Yes.
I agree.
Third Thursday, six P M. Okay.
I like it.
Alright, I think I can give you your agenda back.
Um, I think we have a comments portion. Any, any question, comments? Hasn't, or been said tonight? Alright, let's adjourn. Uh, should I, what, nine fifty-two?
Nine fifty, it's nine fifty.
Thank you for your patience.